Hello and good evening. Welcome to the Paso Robles City Council meeting for Tuesday, August 3. I will read this and probably read it again. With the reopening of California, removal of meeting capacity restrictions, City of Paso Robles has returned in-person meetings for City Council. Residents now have the option to attend the meeting in person or to participate remotely. Out of an abundance of cautions, seating capacity of public meetings will be limited to provide adequate social distancing for those inside the council chambers. Due to the adjustment in seating capacity, the city has taken additional steps to ensure community participation. These steps include opening the rear doors of the council chambers and if the provided seating inside the room reaches capacity, the city will provide a speaker system outside so participants can still hear the council meeting. If you would like to participate in public comment, you will be asked to come inside for that segment of the meeting and then return to your socially-distanced area. To participate remotely, residents can listen to the meeting live on the radio on AM 1230 or livestream the meeting at www.prcity.com/youtube and call 805-865-7276 to provide public comment via phone. The phone line will open just prior to the start of closed session meeting and again prior to the start of the regular meeting. Written public comments can be submitted via email through cityclerk@prcity.com prior to 12 noon on the day of the council meeting to be posted as an addendum to the agenda. If submitting written comments in advance of the meeting, please note the agenda item by number or name. If attending the meeting in person, please submit all speaker cards and correspondence for City Council to the city clerk. We'll call the meeting to order. Ask for roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Gregory?
Here.
Councilmember Hammond?
Here.
Councilmember Strong?
Here.
Mayor Martin?
I am here. All members present, we're going to start up with closed session this evening. I'll ask the city attorney what we're going to be talking about.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will be going into closed session on a number of items this evening. The first item is public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 regarding the position for city manager. We'll also be going in under conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. The city negotiators are Mayor Martin and Councilmember Hammond, and then the unrepresented employee in that case would be the city manager. Additionally, it will be conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 with city negotiators being the interim city manager Greg Carpenter and Ryan Cornell, Administrative Services Director. And the employee organizations would be unrepresented management, unrepresented part-time employees, service employees, International Union, Paso Robles Police Association, and Paso Robles Professional Firefighters. Additionally, we'll be going in under conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 regarding Pioneer Park as the city property, and the negotiators are again Greg Carpenter, the interim city manager, and the negotiating party on the opposite side would be Paso Robles Museum Foundation. And we're going in to discuss price in terms of payment. And that would be everything.
Thank you. I see no written comments attached to the agenda for this evening. No one in the audience physically to comment. Do we have anyone on phone line?
No, sir.
Very good. We open and close public comment prior to closed session, and if there's no objection, we will recess to closed session at this time. Thank you.
Good evening, welcome to the meeting of the Paso Robles City Council for Tuesday, August the 3rd, 2021. I'll read this first before we get started. "With the reopening of California and removal of meeting capacity restrictions, City of Paso Robles has returned to in-person meetings for city council. Residents now have the option to attend the meeting in person or to participate remotely. Out of an abundance of caution, seating capacity at public meetings will be limited to provide adequate social distancing for those inside the council chambers. Due to the adjustment in seating capacity, the city has taken additional steps to ensure community participation. These steps include opening the rear doors of the council chambers, and if the provided seating inside the room reaches capacity, the city will provide a speaker system outside so participants can still hear the council meeting. If you would like to participate in public comment, you'll be asked to come inside for that segment of the meeting, then return to your socially-distanced area. To participate remotely, residents can listen to the meeting live on the radio at AM 1230, or livestream the meeting at www.prcity.com/youtube. You can call 805-865-7276 to provide public comment via phone. The phone line will open just prior to the start of the closed session meeting, and again prior to the start of the regular meeting. Written public comments can be submitted via email to cityclerk@prcity.com prior to 12 noon on the day of the council meeting, to be posted as an addendum to the agenda. If submitting written comments in advance of the meeting, please note the agenda item by referencing the number or name. If attending the meeting in person, please submit all speaker cards and correspondence for city council to the city clerk." And with that, I am happy to convene our meeting and call it to order. Ask everyone if they are able to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be delivered by Councilman Hammond.
Do I want to make the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does Kim agree with us tonight?
Yes, I'm here.
Kim, I have you on the agenda for our invocation.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, my name is Kim McGrew, and I'm with the Board of Directors for Atheists United San Luis Obispo. And tonight, the invocation is an invocation for cooperation. Let us open our hearts to the welfare of all people in our community by respecting the inherent dignity and worth of each person, and realize that our differences of race, religion, and party affiliation are merely superficial. Our common humanity unites us all. In order to achieve the greatest good as citizens, it is important for us to maintain an open mind and honor and respect the human rights of each other. Let us consider the benefit provided by differing perspectives, and be willing to question our old assumptions that serve only to obstruct our path to progress. Rather than bowing our heads and closing our eyes in deference, let us open our eyes widely to face the realities that confront us without losing sight of our ideals of what we can achieve together. Through the prudent use of reason and compassion, we can ensure the success of this great city. Last, let us remember that in the face of adversity, we need not look above for answers, but instead recognize the proven potential within ourselves and each other to overcome any challenges we face. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being with us. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Gregory?
Here.
Councilmember Hammond?
Here.
Councilmember Strong?
Here.
Mayor Martin?
And I'm present, all councilmembers present. At this time, we'd like to set aside a few minutes so we can go around the room, have staff introductions, and if you happen to be a member of a city advisory committee, we would invite you to rise also and identify yourself, and tell us what you do for the city, starting on my right, please.
Warren Frasek, Community Development Director. With me tonight is Katie Bannister, our Assistant Planner, and David Athie, our City Engineer.
Melissa Boyer, City Clerk, joined tonight by Dave McHugh, Information Technology Manager, and Shawna Howenstein, Civic Engagement Coordinator.
I'm Lucas Esparanza, representing the first officer of the police. Here. Tonight, we have Roger Ockroyd.
Andrew Yerkes, tonight, our long-term...
Very good.
And we have some department heads on the phone.
Yes, we have department heads in the meeting telephonically. Would they like to introduce themselves?
Yes.
Hi, Kai Lewis, our police chief, online as well.
This Christopher Leckel, Interim Public Works Director. Also joining remotely from Public Works is Kristen Faravani, Assistant Capital Projects Engineer.
I'm Elizabeth Hall, I'm with Best, Bestin, Krieger, and serve as your city attorney.
And Greg Carpenter, interim city manager.
Very good, thank you all. We had a closed session meeting prior to this regularly-announced regular session meeting, and for report out on that, I'll ask the city attorney if there was any reportable action.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We went into closed session for four items: Public Employee Appointment, City Manager Position; Conference with Labor Negotiators, again for the City Manager Position; Conference with Labor Negotiators Regarding Unrepresented Management Employees; Unrepresented Part-Time Employees; Service Employees International Union; Paso Robles Police Association, and then also the Professional Firefighters. And then finally, we went in for Conference with Real Property Negotiators, and there was no reportable action on any of those items.
Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda tonight is a presentation by the Housing Authority of San Luis Obispo. Do we have someone in person or online?
We do have Elaine Archer participating virtually.
Hi, I unmuted my microphone. Thank you very much for having me this evening. I am here to give you a short presentation about the Housing Authority of San Luis Obispo, and our role in the community, and some of the new programs that we have. Okay, and then I'll talk about some future development, and then at the end, we have time for some questions, if you have any. Next. So, Haslow started in 1968, commissioned through the city of San Luis Obispo, but sometime in the 70s, I believe, that was extended so that we are now representing the entire community, the county of San Luis Obispo. Our primary role is that of providing Section 8 rental subsidy. So, we provide, we have an allotment of 2,778 vouchers, and that voucher enables a participant to find housing and live anywhere with a landlord that is willing to accept that voucher. We have regular vouchers, and over the last five to seven years, we have had special purpose vouchers for veterans, homeless individuals, those living with a disability, and we've grown that voucher count by almost 600. So, when I started in 2012, I think we were just over 1,800, almost 1,900 vouchers, and now we're almost at 2,800 vouchers. Next. Our second primary role in the community is that as a landlord and a property management agent. So, we actually own 38 properties, 850 units, and we have properties all the way from Napa to Paso Robles, and including the coast. Our third role is developing new properties. So, we look for land and the ability to construct new properties to continue to expand the source of affordable housing in the community. We are currently in construction on one property in Napa, and we are about to start in this year, in 2021, a new property in Slow, as well as one in Morro Bay. Next. And finally, we provide educational opportunities to the general public to learn about affordable housing. There's a lot of complexity to it, a lot of different ways of accessing affordable housing, and so we offer what is called the Housing 101 class to teach the community about the programs, and we're an active participant in H-SOC, or the Homeless Services Oversight Council. Next. So, our newest program is Paso Home Key. So, that is one that you, of course, as a city, are familiar with. We partnered with Echo and People Self-Help Housing to obtain funding through the state of California's Project Home Key. The state funded 94 Home Key projects, which provided over 6,000 units for those experiencing homelessness throughout the state of California. Specifically here in Paso Robles, we were able to create two avenues for working with those who are homeless: 60 affordable permanent housing units, and 40 overnight emergency those who are homeless: 60 affordable permanent housing units and 40 overnight emergency shelter units. Through both services offered by Echo and Haslow, we are also providing supportive housing services since we know that moving from homelessness to being housed is a transition and that the tenants may need assistance during that transition to ensure long-term success. Next. We also, in May, the federal government announced new vouchers, 70,000 were distributed nationwide. We received 156 vouchers, and they are dedicated to working with those who are homeless or at risk of homeless, fleeing domestic violence or human trafficking. We partnered with H-SOC and developed an MOU as well as with over a dozen other agencies to get referrals for these emergency housing vouchers. We are calling them the Help Welcome Home Program, and we are going to be undertaking a media campaign to seek landlords to partner with us on housing those in our community that struggle with safe, decent, and affordable housing. So far, we've taken over 350 referrals, and we are issuing vouchers to them so that they can look for housing. The challenge, however, is that there is not enough housing in this community, or it's very tough to find housing. The vacancy rate is very, very low, and so HUD has provided additional funding to offer landlord incentives so that we can try and encourage landlords to participate in this program and to house our participants. So, if you go to the next slide, the landlord incentive program, we will be offering a bonus of $4,000 for new landlords to the program. All landlords will get a minimum of $1,000 if they house one of these participants, and if it was a landlord that left within the last 12 months, there would be a $2,500 bonus. We are also providing a bonus to the property management agent if they are represented by a third party because we recognize that the relationship between the owner and the property management agent is very important for obtaining housing for our participants. In addition, a lot of landlords have expressed concern: what happens if this tenant damages my unit and the security deposit is not sufficient? So, we are providing up to $7,500 in addition to the security deposit to assist if there are damages within the first two years of tenancy. We are also able to offer what is called a payment standard, a higher payment standard. So, that's the threshold by which we measure the, and calculate the amount of housing assistance that we are going to provide because in the Section 8 program, the participant pays 30% of their income, and then the housing authority pays the rest up to this payment standard. And so, we are able to offer higher payment standards as well in the program. On the next screen, we show what those payment standards are, and just so everyone knows, we have over 650 unique landlords that already work with Haslow throughout the county of San Luis Obispo. 10% of those are large landlords or property management agent, which means we have over 500 landlords who have only one or two units. So, we're really trying to reach those landlords who may not be familiar with Haslow, who may not know that this program even exists, to help those who are looking for affordable housing in our community. And, for example, for a one-bedroom, that payment standard would be $1,0515 versus our regular payment standard of almost $1,400. And so, we hope to be able to reach a larger number of units by being able to offer a higher monthly rate on those units in addition to the bonus to work with participants. So, what are Housing Choice vouchers, or Section 8, as it is commonly known? So, the Section 8 program is one where participants pay 30% of their income and the housing authority pays the rest. That voucher could be used anywhere in the county, so they can find a landlord that is willing to rent to them, or they can use that voucher anywhere in the country. So, if they've got family back east and they've been away from family and they decide, you know, it's really time to live closer to family, or maybe grandma needs to move closer to wherever the kids live and needs more support, they can take that voucher with them and look for housing wherever they want. The bulk of our housing voucher, when we are issuing them to new participants, should be directed to those who are below 30% of area median income, which means they're extremely low-income, and the dollar amount for an extremely low, single-person household is $20,000 a year, and it would be $26,000 a year for a three-person household. So, you can imagine, if you're earning $26,000 a year, you know, that's a minimum wage job that's not even full-time, and we know that in many sectors in the community that it's hard to find full-time employment, and so they are often working more than one job. We open the waiting list, we try to open it once a year rather than keep the list closed for years and years because we want to offer our community hope that if they didn't get selected in this year's lottery, that maybe they can get selected in next year's lottery. And so, we try to select as many names as we think we may need in the next year. We hope to open the voucher waiting list in 2021, but it really depends what happens with these Welcome Home vouchers. That's going to be the focus of our energy and time right now in looking for housing. So, what's in Haslow's future? So, we do continue to develop new housing. We took a look at what's in our pipeline, and there's almost 500 units that we hope to build over the next three to five to seven years. It does take a long time to go through the development timeframe, and we are active in developing new housing, new affordable housing throughout the community. We are also working to preserve and renovate our aging housing stock to ensure that it remains in good condition. And so, for example, public housing was how we started in the city of San Luis Obispo. That was 168 units. We are just in the finishing months of renovating those 168 units. We have created seven new units out of that redevelopment and renovated completely the interior and the exterior of the units, and so we now have 175 renovated units. So, that's been a long, two-year process for us. And next, I think, yeah. So, I would be open to taking any questions. My contact information is on here as well as the phone number that we have dedicated for these Welcome Home vouchers so that those individuals who have a home or an accessory dwelling unit or are even interested in renting out a bedroom, it is possible to do something called shared housing where you rent out a bedroom, you earn a little bit of extra income and provide housing for someone at the same time. And we do have a dedicated phone line to answer questions for those that would like to learn more about the program.
Thank you, Elaine, for that presentation. This is a presentation item, so we have no action required of the council tonight. We will entertain questions in spite of the echo. I do have a question that I'd like to ask on behalf of the public. It's very easy for us involved in government to get mired down in acronyms. You, early in the presentation, talked about working with an organization known as H-SOC. I imagine there are people in the room and people listening in that don't know what H-SOC is. Could you explain that?
Yes. H-SOC is the Homeless Services Oversight Council, and it is a group of nonprofits and city council members and county council members from all of the cities and the county who meet on a regular basis to address the issue of homelessness in our community.
And they may have recommendations of the County Board of Supervisors regarding the distribution of funds for homeless services throughout the county.
Right.
Thank you. Other questions from council? Mr. Strong?
Yes. My question is, do you work with any other housing authorities in the county such as the Paso Robles Housing Authority? If so, in what manner?
Yes, we do work with the Paso Robles Housing Authority. We have, they are also a developer of properties. They have built now rebuilt four stages of Oak Park, and we partner with them to provide what are called project-based vouchers, and so they have dedicated units at their properties that are assisted by a Section 8 voucher so that those units remain deeply affordable to those that are extremely low-income.
Any other questions from council? Any questions from the community? I see anyone rising to speak. We thank you again for the presentation and the information. Will your contact information be available on the city website?
We could make that available, I can coordinate with your staff.
That would be appreciated. Thank you very much, have a pleasant evening.
Thank you.
We come now to general public comments. This is the time set aside for the public to address the council on items within the council's purview but not scheduled on the agenda tonight. If you wish to speak, please begin by stating your name and address. Each person is limited to three minutes. Any person or subject requiring more than three minutes may be scheduled for a future council meeting or referred to committee or staff. Those persons wishing to speak on any items scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time that item is being considered. This is general public comment, welcome, sir. Dale, is your mic on? I can't hear you.
My name is Dale Guston, 945 Spring Street. Thank you, and good evening. I looked at the agenda, I didn't see any reference to a meeting scheduled for tomorrow. Is there a meeting scheduled for tomorrow on the parking? And what time?
Thank you, sir. So, we will announce the upcoming meetings, but there will be a special meeting in the council tomorrow night to interview candidates for J-20 Committee and for the Parking Commission. Any other general public comment? In that case, we will close general public comment.
Excuse me, sir, we have two callers online.
I apologize, I'm not used to this hybrid meeting situation. We have two callers online, who's our first call?
Our first caller is Chris Rodebush.
Chris, welcome.
Hi, good evening, my name is Chris Rodebush from the We Are the Care Initiative. This month, as the summer leans towards autumn and our children begin to return to school and more parents return to work, we are feeling a hopeful sense of our pre-COVID world. The societal shift is allowing our economy some space to rebuild, but the drastic and devastating effects of the pandemic are being felt among working families. The childcare crisis continues to be dire, and we must continue to focus on solutions to support families and in turn, the youngest members of our community. There cannot be an economic recovery in our county if there is no childcare. One way to simplify and conceptualize challenges associated with our complicated childcare crisis is a trilemma: three equally important and necessary components of a thriving childcare system. One, we must be able to provide fair compensation to the professionals who make up the childcare workforce. Two, we must be able to provide high-quality care to children and families. And three, childcare must be accessible and affordable. It's interesting that you had a presentation from HUD today because in Slow County, 24% of a median incomes family budget goes to childcare, more than housing. Childcare professionals and early childcare educators deserve to be paid a higher wage, and they deserve to be respected in our community for how truly, essentially, they are. For over two years, We Are the Care has been building connections, gaining momentum, and searching for ways to address the childcare trilemma. To support working families in Slow County, the Family Friendly Workplace Toolkit created by We Are the Care has encouraged many businesses to reevaluate their practices and began to shift towards a more family-friendly focus. We are excited to announce that in addition to the toolkit, a Family Friendly Workplace Accelerator Program has been created. This program, to be housed within the Slow Chamber of Commerce, is available as a free resources for all businesses countywide, and will focus on accelerating the adoption of family-friendly practices in workplaces and educating Slow County employers on strategies to sustain a strong local workforce through investments in quality care and family-friendly practices. For more information on We Are the Care or to get involved, please contact First Five San Luis Obispo County or www-firstfiveslow.org. Thank you so much for your time and for your continued support of the young children and families in your community.
Thank you for your comments. And who else do we have online?
Next is Jan Albin.
Welcome, Jan.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much. I'm here, I'm sorry, my name is Jan Albin, I'm a resident of Coyle Run Senior Estates, and I'm here tonight as only one of the multitudes of concerned citizens regarding the intersection of Golden Hill and Creston Road. I submitted pictures as an addendum just in case you haven't driven by there lately. On one of our social media sites, I posted a survey asking people how they felt about reducing the speed approaching that light, and out of all the dozens and dozens of comments made on that page, not a single one expressed anything other than the distress due to the unsafe speed and their discomfort at that intersection. Discomfort as in simply being stopped at the light and the fear of being rear-ended. And because of the number of incidents there, the city has installed K-rails to protect parts of the wall on Creston. And what bothers me is that the city thinks that this is the answer to the increasingly dangerous intersection. Even with several K-rails there, the accident that occurred last June 26th hit an unprotected part of the wall and as well as the speed limit sign. That accident had a witness account saying that the red car was in the left-hand turn lane stopped, and a white car came barreling down Golden Hills and slammed into the back of it. That is the classic scenario and simply an all-too太多 occurrence at that intersection. Even more distressing than the recounts of the near misses and personal witnessing of accidents are the stories told by the homeowners whose backyards butt up to that wall on Creston, a wall that has not only been hit multiple times but has been broken through multiple times into backyards where children are playing. These homeowners live in fear of perhaps a large, heavy truck coming too fast, crashing over those K-rails and coming through the wall. When you put those K-rails there, you believe the wall should be protected and in fact, then acknowledge the danger and responsibility. But K-rails are not a permanent solution. So, if the city thinks those incidents happen too often and are serious enough to put the K-rails there, why would you not take steps to reduce the speed approaching that intersection? Without doing a formal state road survey, there are steps the city can take to slow the speed in that last quarter mile before the light. There are road calming devices such as speed humps, not speed bumps, speed humps that sit only one and a half inches high and are less aggressive than speed bumps. They are known to slow traffic by five to 10 miles an hour depending on their placement and how many are used. There are signs the city can post, warning drivers to slow down for the approaching stop ahead.
Jan, that's three minutes, can you summarize, please?
I will, just two more minutes, or two more seconds. Road calming and reducing the speed is the long-term solution, K-rails are not. I'm here tonight to ask you to direct our city engineer to investigate any and all measures that we can take to reduce the speed at this intersection, and then please, report those findings to the council and to the public. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else online with a public comment?
No, sir.
Second chance, anybody in the room? Okay, we're going to close general public comment, bring it back to the council. There was one explicit question. Chief Lewis, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
There was a question about the setting of speed limits. Could you educate us on how speed limits are set and our ability to affect those?
Yeah, so as Ms. Albin pointed out, there are formal speed surveys that regulate the speed for each individual road throughout the city. We call those surveys. They regularly are done in compliance with our ability to be able to enforce those speeds, so that's the way those speeds are set. And without having the speed survey in front of me, I don't know if Deidre's is on the line, I might be able to speak to that, she usually coordinates those, but I'm confident that the speed limit that was set for that particular stretch of the roadway is in compliance with our speed survey. We rarely deviate from those unless there's a regular mitigating set of circumstances.
Thank you. Deidre, do you want to make any comment about our criteria for establishing speed humps or any sort of traffic mitigations? or any sort of traffic mitigations? Could you take the microphone?
Mr. Mayor, this is David Athie. I can handle that question.
Thank you. I'm sorry, David. Go ahead.
No, no, no problem. So I'm going to share my screen real quick. I've got some good news for council. As part of a recent local roadway safety grant, we actually studied this intersection. So we've gone through and looked at the different accidents that have occurred. And we have some collision recommendations to address the collisions at this recommendation. This report and plan was adopted by council. We went through it, looking at, you know, what are the major collisions? And one of them, as Ms. Albin stated, is raring collisions. That is a problem here. And so we've got a plan. We know what we want to do to achieve some safety upgrades in this area. I also want to talk about the K-rail. So the K-rail were installed. We had a series of driving-under-the-influence accidents at this intersection. And the residents in this location are concerned about, naturally, a car flying through their wall. So the K-rail were placed as an additional safety measure in this location. We by no means think that this is the final solution. We are continuing to look at options for this intersection. A flashing beacon up here to alert drivers to the oncoming traffic. A new signal head pointing this direction to allow drivers to actually see the status of the signal better. Some dilemma zone detection. We talked about that at the adoption meeting for this plan, looking at what do we do if there's a car coming down and it's a yellow light and they're trying to beat it? Do we let the yellow phase go a little longer? So these are all options. We do have a plan. We do have a cost estimate, and we do have a plan for implementing these in the future. We'll be applying for a future Highway Safety Improvement Program grant, not just for this intersection, but for the other intersections that are in our plan that could use some safety upgrades. So I just want to let you know that we have studied it. We do have a plan, and we are continuing to move forward with implementing our plan.
Thank you for that information. Really pleased that staff's aware of this situation and out ahead of it. I hope it gives Jan and the neighbors down there a little bit of comfort to know that. This was an answer to a public comment or other public question during general public comments, so it's not an agendized item. We really can't take any action on it tonight. But it's good to get that information and get it out to the people. Move on now. I'll ask city manager if we have any agenda items that are to be deferred this evening.
No, sir.
In that case, we have the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine, not requiring separate discussion. However, if discussion is wanted by a member of the council or public, the item may be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Council members and members of the public may offer comments or ask questions of clarification without removing an item from the calendar. Individual items are approved by the vote that approves the consent calendar unless an item is pulled for separate consideration. Items pulled from consent will be heard at the end of the meeting. That being said, I will turn to the council and ask if there are questions or items to be removed. Mr. Hammond. Okay, why don't you switch your mic on there, John? Councilman has a couple of questions. Go ahead, John.
13 and 18. So question on 13, maybe Deidre might be able to answer, I guess. This is a relook or a redo of our PCI Payment Condition Index that we've already done before. And I'm wondering why we have to spend more money to update it at this point? Or so soon, I guess, is what I'm trying to figure out.
So the last time we did the update was in 2016. So every five years, you should be updating it because since 2016, we've performed maintenance of a lot of our streets, and then a lot of them have deteriorated. So we need to have a snapshot of current conditions so that we will have accurate information moving forward in selecting streets for our maintenance. So it was five years ago, and actually, we needed to do it a year ago. But because of COVID, we postponed the expenditure, and so we would like to move forward with this update at this time.
Okay. I'll ask for discussion, I guess, or whatever. And then on 18, Mr. Mayor, that is authorization for you to sign on our behalf. And the way it reads, I think, is council rendering a, I guess, a vote or not a vote? That's what I'm not quite understanding. This gives you the authority to sign letters in our support?
Right.
Or opposition? Is that after we've discussed it, I guess?
So let me explain that. And if you want, we can pull it for full discussion.
Yeah.
That'd be fine. In the past, because we're involved with something called CalCities, formerly known as League of California Cities, we are frequently called upon as a city, and they often, or almost always, come to the mayor asking for this to either advocate for or oppose something at the state level. As many people know, we, as a community, have experienced a great deal of frustration with the state because we can't seem to affect them at times. We can't seem to have input into that situation. I, as mayor, with very few exceptions, when these things have been sent to me, have brought them to the council for their direction because I felt that was appropriate. The downside of that is that we sometime cannot reply in a timely fashion. By the time able to agendize the discussion, the issue has already passed. So that we have no opportunity as a city to make an input into the state decision-making process on those items. This item would give me that authority to do, in those cases, a response in accordance with city policies and goals. And not something that I would anticipate using often, but in those cases, when time is critical. And that's the reason it's on the agenda.
So in other words, if it matches our goals that we've already stated, then you would have the authority and basically the straw vote of everybody that that would be our consideration?
This would not be the authorization to go off on my own direction and say, yeah, the city wants the state to paint the roses blue or something like that.
Very good. That's what I need. Thank you.
Any other questions on consent? Anybody have something you want to have removed? Okay, we'll go to the public questions or removals. Mr. Guston.
Dale Guston, 945 Spring Street. My comment on 18 is I think that's giving too much authority to the mayor without the consent of the rest of the council, and I don't think that should be granted. My other comment is on number 15. As I've indicated this council before, I don't think that this is a change in the routing of Vine Street that is necessary. It is being done for the convenience of the developer, and I think the developer should pay for the whole thing.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the room that has a comment or a question about one of the items on the consent calendar? Anybody online?
Not regarding consent, sir. We did receive another general public caller when we're through with this.
Okay, we've already had general public comments.
I was told they called while David Athie was speaking in response to one of the questions.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Said I was told they were called while David Athie was speaking in response to one of the questions that came up during general public comment.
Okay, we'll finish consent calendar, and then we'll listen to that. Anybody have a comment on consent calendar? Okay, in that case, we're going to close public comment on the consent calendar and bring it back to the council for discussion. John, did you want to remove 18?
No.
Okay, Mr. Gregory.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Yes.
I move that we approve items 2 through 18 on the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion, my councilman Gregory. Second, my councilman Strong. And as part of discussion, I want to draw the public attention to a public comment that was made via email to the city clerk. Mr. Jeff Carr also opposes the action proposed for item number 18.
And could I make a comment too, Mr. Mayor?
Certainly.
And that is an example. The state decided they want to take all of our road money and use it for state purposes. And that was the League of Cities that opposed that and asked for support to do it. And because of the tremendous support from cities, the state did not take that money, and we were able to fix our roads. So these are the kinds of things that sometimes we need rapid action for because it comes up before the legislature quickly. And if we don't take action, they think we don't care.
And also, in comments on items that are not time-sensitive, I would not exercise that authority. So I think this is something that's...
Right.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye, with the exception of 13, I'm going to vote no. I'd rather see the 82,000 go to our streets.
And Mayor Martin?
Aye. With the exception of the one vote approved unanimously. Now, I have to ask the city attorney this. I have somebody online who wants to make a general public comment. They were sort of caught in transit while staff was speaking. But we are supposed to go directly to the next item. Is that a problem?
They hung up. Excuse me, sir. They hung up. I'm sorry.
They're gone?
Yes. They said they would email their comments.
I apologize, whoever was online. If you'd like to call back, that's fine. If you want to call me personally, that's fine. If you want to email me, that's fine. But we tried. Okay, so we're going to move on now to the next item on our agenda, which is... Well, before I do that, I'm going to ask the city manager, please give us a report on the consent calendar for the folks listening. And what did we just do?
Yes, sir. There are 17 items. So it's a lengthy list. Item 2 was approval of city council meeting minutes for four meetings. Item 3 was the receipt of the city's warrant register for last month. Item 4 was receipt of advisory body minutes from three bodies: Senior Citizen Advisory, the Library Board of Trustees, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Item 5 was the designation of voting delegates and alternates for the 2021 League of California Cities Annual Conference, which is occurring next month. The council appointed councilmember Strong as your delegate, voting delegate, and Mayor Martin as the alternate. Item 6 is a change to the city council meeting schedule. Two changes. One is to accommodate the upcoming League of Cities meeting. And the other is to accommodate a scheduling conflict. So the meeting that was scheduled for Thursday, September 9th, is being moved, or has been moved, to Tuesday, September 7th. So that'd be the day following Labor Day. And you are canceling your September 21st meeting due to the League of California Cities Conference. Item 7 was an extension or a new agreement with the Lieber Cassidy Whitmore. That's the firm we've been using for labor negotiation services. That contract expired, and we have some upcoming issues related to labor negotiations, and we have approved a new contract with Lieber Cassidy. Item 8 was the approval of employee dental and vision insurance, renewal of those plans. The... They're set to expire at the end of the year, and we've approved our dental insurance for an additional one year and vision insurance for four years. Item 9 is authorization to continuing emergency action to repair Fire Station 2. So there was fire damage at Fire Station 2. We declared an emergency and immediately started work there. That work is scheduled to be done the third week of this month. So this hopefully is the last time that this item is on your agenda. Item 10 was a rejection of all bids for median and Parkway Landscape Maintenance. Item 11 was an award of a contract for mass grading and installation of underground utilities and the construction of Ardmore Road. And those work projects are all related to Fire Station Number 3, which is set to begin construction this summer. Item 12 was the award of construction agreements for the annual pavement maintenance project. Those are several west-side streets that will be treated with pavement coating later this summer. Item 13 was an award of contract to update the Pavement Condition Index for all city streets. That's an update to the report that the city is required to have on the condition of our city streets. Item 14 is approval in agreement with Pavement Engineering, Inc. to provide professional engineering design services for zones 5F, 5C, and 7C. Those are the Appaloosa Melody Drive West and Rolling Hills Estates neighborhoods. So we will be doing pavement improvements in those neighborhoods this year. Item 15 is approval in agreement with SandTech to acquire permits for the South Vine Bridge. We are in need of updating the environmental studies for that project, and there are a number of permits that need to be acquired in order for that project to be considered shovel-ready. So this is an agreement with the firm that is going to do those studies and obtain those permits on behalf of the city. Item 16 was acceptance of a final map for the properties at 533 through 549 28th Street. This is a subdivision of one lot into three lots, which will accommodate the three existing homes that are on the property. Item 17 is the approval of the award of construction agreements and acceptance of an FAA grant in order to do work at the airport. We are accepting a grant for $1.2 million from the FAA and awarding contracts for work that will replace 400 lights at the airport, approximately 400 lights at the airport, with LED lights and the replacement of an emergency generator. And finally, item 18 was authorization of the mayor to sign letters in support or opposition on behalf of the city council under very certain circumstances to support or oppose legislation. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Thank you very much. Moving on now to our public hearing agenda. Item 19 is the public hearing to receive input from the community regarding the redrawing of election district boundaries.
Good evening, Mayor Martin and members of council. This is going to be the first of what will be four public hearings to receive input from the community regarding the redrawing of election district boundaries. As you all know, on April 16th, 2019, the city council adopted Ordinance 1071, establishing by-district elections for four council members, defining district boundaries, and scheduling the order of elections for each district. The city adopted its current district boundaries based on the 2010 census data as required by law. And every 10 years, cities with by-district election systems must use the new census data to review and, if needed, redraw district lines to reflect how local populations have changed. Earlier this year, the city hired NDC, a demography consultant, firm that we used in order to establish the district boundaries a few years back. And Shalise Tilton, one of their senior consultants, will be giving you a presentation this evening on what will be happening in this process.
Good evening, Mayor Martin and council members. My name is Shalise Tilton. I am a senior consultant with National Demographics Corporation. You will hear us referred to as often as NDC. And it's my pleasure to be here again. I was one of the leads on the team when the city went to districts in 2019. Next slide, please. As your city clerk mentioned, there are four required public hearings in the process. The laws have changed since the city went through the districting process last time. In January 2020, we saw AB 849 go into effect. AB 849 is also known as the Fair Maps Act. The Fair Maps Act clarifies a number of steps that must be taken when redrawing the lines to balance out the districts to match the population from the federal census. Part of that is the required public hearings. There are four total public hearings. We will be having two of the pre-map public hearings, this one tonight, and then another one on October 5th. As most of you are aware, the census data is delayed due to COVID-19. Normally, we would have had the census data in April. We'd be starting this process last April. But actually, we will not have any data until August 16th. We'll get some rough format, some legacy format data that the state will be able to use. And when I say the state will be able to use, what happens is after the federal census released to the states its raw data, the state needs to then zero out all the state prisons and reassign all the incarcerated state prisoners to their home addresses. The state is believing that will take up to six weeks. After that process, there's a mandatory three-week waiting period before the city or the city's consultant can release any maps. So that puts us well into the holidays, and we will not be revisiting this until after the first of the year. However, because the census data is so delayed, NDC has produced some estimates of what we believe the 2020 population will be so that the public can now start to draw maps based on that estimated data with the hopes that once the final data is released in October, that should say 2021. It looks like we have 202011. Once we get that released, they'll be able to fine-tune their maps so that when it's time for the maps to middle after the first of the year, they'll have plenty of time to be able to refine their maps. We'll have two draft map hearings after the first of the year. to discuss the preferred maps and to possibly adopt those maps or make some final changes from the city council. And the city council is required to adopt by April seventeenth. Next slide, please. There are, in addition to the Fair Maps Act, we have our federal laws that we must follow. Those have not changed. That is equal population based on the federal census. As you recall, in 2019, when we went through the process and adopted the map, we had to use the 2010 census data. So we used the 2010 census data last time when we created the districts. This time we'll be using the 2020. The Federal Voting Rights Act also requires that we cannot draw districts that would be drawn in a way as to reduce the voting strength of your protected class groups. And then, of course, there can be no racial gary mandarin, meaning that the lines cannot be drawn solely based on race. Instead, we must consider other factors. Some of those other factors can be shared culture, shared language spoken at home, shared social networking. Those type of things are what should be considered when, in addition to, and ethnicity and race can be a factor, just not the prominent factor. The middle column that you're seeing is spelled out in the Fair Maps Act, and it's actually now assigned an order of priority. So we must, in order of priority, meet all these mandated criteria. This is new. In the past, these are traditional principles that we followed, but not mandated, and now they are mandated. The first being geographically contiguous, so each of the four districts must be one solid line, not bits and pieces here and there, one solid boundary. Undivided neighborhoods and communities of interest. This is going to be one that we'll be focusing on. We want to hear what the neighborhoods are and what those communities of interest are. I'll be talking about that more just a little bit. Easily identifiable boundaries. You can think of that as someone is verbalizing what the boundaries are, being able to say it follows the railroad, or it follows the freeway, or a major street. That's what is considered easily identifiable boundaries. Compactness. What compactness means is that you don't bypass one group of people to get to a more distant group of people. So oftentimes, there are reasons why lines are not drawn perfectly square, or district boundaries are not drawn perfectly square. And so it's not necessarily based on shape, but if you've bypassed one neighborhood to get to a more distant neighborhood, that's what it's talking about, avoiding that when you're trying to achieve compactness. Other traditional principles, once you've met all the prioritized criteria, we often look at trying to minimize those voters that are shifted to a different election year. So you can imagine those voters who are anticipating voting in 2022, if they were shifted to a 2024 district, then it would have been six years since they voted for a council member. If we've met all the criteria and we're able to produce an option that would avoid pairing incumbents in the same district, we'll provide that option because we want to give the voters the opportunity to voice whether a council member has earned reelection or not, as opposed to where a demographer has drawn the lines. We can consider future population growth, but that was in, it's somewhat, it is very restricted, just a minor amount. And we'll talk about the percentage of, possibly you can under-populate a certain district if you know there's going to be growth in that district. And then preserving the core of the existing districts, if that's one of the goals of the council, that can also be considered if the previous criteria have been met. The next slide, please. I mentioned the NDC has provided some 2020 estimates. We believe that there's been, since 2010, the population has increased about 1,600. So each of the districts now will need to have about 7,849 people. If our estimates hold true, then we would see that we would have, we've had, we are not population balanced. And I'll explain what that means. Population balance does not have to be exactly the number, but it has to be no more than a greater than 10% deviation between the least populated district and the greatest populated district. So you could see here that if the estimates the NDC has provided for 2020 hold true, we see there's been more growth in districts two and three. And in fact, District Two would be 9% overpopulated, and District Four would be 7.8% underpopulated. So when you add those two together, we're at 16.82%. It's presumptively constitutional to have less than 10% deviation. So we need that 16.82 number to be reduced by balancing out these districts and adjusting the lines slightly. That is, if the NDC estimates hold true. The next line that I'm showing is the citizen voting age population. That category is important. It's often referred to as CVAP or CVAP. Those are the people who are U.S. citizens and eligible to vote, meaning they're 18 years of age or older. Oftentimes, groups will look at these percentages to see if, in fact, the lines have been drawn to support and strengthen the voting power of their protected class groups. Next slide, please. What you're seeing here is a color-coded concentration of your Latino citizen voting age population. When you're seeing the greens, the yellows, and the pinks, that tells us that 50% or greater of our Latino citizen voting age population reside in those color-coded areas, the pinks, the yellows, and the greens, mostly concentrated along the west side of 101 and around Sherwood and Royal Oaks Parks in the southwest. We don't see any large geographic concentrations of other protected class groups of our African Americans, Asian Americans, or Native Americans. They are not large enough to influence the demographics of any particular district. Next slide, please. Some other things that could possibly be considered are parks and neighborhoods, especially if they're focal points for a neighborhood. Perhaps that defines a community, or people in that particular area identify with a certain neighborhood. Next, please. Another consideration is the downtown area. And the question of downtown area, especially areas that are not quite as heavily populated, should it be united in one district, or could it be part of several districts? Next slide, please. So we're asking for the public hearing tonight to hear from both the community and both the city council on what is your neighborhood. And keep in mind, when we're hearing testimony on what neighborhoods are, we need to be able to translate it to a map. So it's very helpful if you give us street names or major roads, or if there's a certain circumference around a landmark or a park. Anything that would help us to translate it to a map is very helpful. In the absence of public testimony, sometimes we can look at planning records, different zoning, and other documents that may be available to help us identify where neighborhoods reside. Next slide, please. And then beyond neighborhoods, there are other factors that define communities. Sometimes there'll be a particular geographical area. Some areas have shared issues or shared characteristics. Some have issues of traffic, or maybe homelessness, or some areas have an agriculture focus, and some have different types of focuses. Those are also things that may define a community. So not only do we want to hear about what you consider your regular neighborhood block, but other things that may keep the communities together. Maybe there's a particular policy that's at the city or the county or even the state level that affects a certain area within the city more than others. That would help to, that would be one example of a community of interest. And then, once you've defined that community of interest, again, would it benefit by included, be included in a single district for its purposes of its effective and fair representation? Or would it benefit by having multiple representatives? Next slide, please. We now have, actually have, a definition of community of interest. Up until this point, we didn't. But the election code now has said that "community of interest is a population that shares common social or economic interests that should be included within a single district for purposes of its effective and fair representation." And that emphasis has been added to show that sometimes you will have what is clearly a community of interest, but it may not benefit from being in a single district. And communities of interest do not include relationships with political parties, incumbents, or political candidates. Next slide. To assist the public in being able to start drawing maps now, again, as I mentioned, we have the estimated 2020 data. The city has also made the decision to offer all the tools that are available, and NDC provides more tools than any other consultants out there. We have everything from a simple review map, where you can just view the maps, not necessarily draw maps, but just look at the maps. You can overlay different maps as they're submitted and compare maps one to another. There's also another tool, an easy to draw your neighborhood tool. We'll have paper tools where you can simply do the math yourself, or we have an Excel supplement to go along with the paper tools that you can use. And then we have the most powerful tool that you'll be able to draw maps online. And I'm going to quickly go through those in the next slides. Be a very brief review. Next slide, please. Story Map is one of those viewing tools. And in this map, there'll be various maps that will be loaded for Paso Robles. This happens to be a sample from Goleta that's on your screen. But we will have all types of information. Of course, we'll have the existing maps. We can have maps of the Assembly Districts, Senate Districts, Fire Districts, School Districts, various zoning maps. Any map that you have, that you'd like to see, be part of the city's story, we can include on there. And of course, as maps get submitted, they will also be part of Story Map. It works like a PowerPoint, but instead of going from slide to slide, you scroll through the different maps. Next slide. And then the simple review tool. This is a great tool because you can zoom in very closely and see the street names. You can type in your address and see where your particular address is. But this tool is often used in conjunction with the paper tools because the paper tools don't identify every street. You can open up this map review tool and zoom in and see exactly what streets you're looking at when you're trying to compare to your paper map. Next slide. This is a sample of the paper map that we used in 2018 and 2019. And what we do for you is we divide the city into population units and identify the population count. So one would need to just draw the lines of their district and try to reach that target count of 7,849 per each district. The next slide. If you do not want to do the math yourself, there's a second paper tool that has, instead of the population in each of those population units, they're just numbered consecutively, one through, I think it's about one through seventy. And what you can do is, after you've drawn your map, you'll say, okay, I have, you know, population units that are numbered one through fifteen. I've placed them in my District Two. You open up a spreadsheet, and you just assign District Two to those population units that are numbered one through fifteen or whatever you had chosen. And it does the math for you. It shows you your population count as well as the citizen voting age population. What's great about the paper maps is you can just take a picture of it with your cell phone and send it into the city. Next slide. New this year, we have District R. District R can either be drawn, just to draw your own neighborhood. You don't necessarily need to complete an entire map, or you actually can complete an entire map with District R. It's a very simple tool. It doesn't provide all the data. It does provide the population counts, however. And you just simply activate the paintbrush. You can make the paintbrush as wide or as narrow as you want and just start painting in your district and see the population grow as you are building a district. Next slide. The most powerful tool that we have available is the public version of MapTitude Online Redistricting. It's the same tool that demographers use when we're drawing the professional maps. And this tool is available in English, Spanish, Portuguese, Vietnamese, Mandarin, and Korean. We have a quick start guide, and we also have videos to help assist in drawing this map, what's drawing, and learning to use this drawing tool. What's great about MapTitude is that folks can start drawing maps now. And if they're not ready to submit them to us, they can simply share them. They can save them for their own personal use to tweak later, or they can share them with the general public, and then someone could take a map that's been shared and say, I like this map, but I want to change this and this and make a new map, make it their own map. We will also have the existing districts as a starting point if someone wants to start with the existing districts in drawing a map. Next slide, please. Before I finish up, I do want to point out that any map that's submitted, it doesn't matter in what format it's submitted. And if you choose not to use one of our tools and you want to use either a tool, another tool you have, or you can want to use just a simple map and draw, take a Chamber of Commerce map, for example, and draw the districts. Any map that's submitted, we take and we produce it professionally, so they all look the same. They're all treated equally. Each map will have a set of demographic summary with it that will show the population for each of the district and those citizen voting age population by category, as well as other socio and economic data for each of the four districts that are drawn in the map. We don't weed out the maps. Every map that is submitted is produced. If a map happens to be drawn that does not meet the criteria, then we will still produce that map. We will just point out that it's a non-conforming map, and if the council likes the map, then there would need to be some changes to make it conforming. So at this point, I'm finished. This finishes my presentation. Again, it raises a reminder on the public hearing, we want to hear what is your neighborhood, what are the boundaries, what are other notable areas in the city and those boundaries? And then I'm happy to answer any questions about the process or about the mapping tools. At the next public hearing, we're hoping to hear some definitive testimony on what the communities of interest are. We would like the council to verbalize what those communities are so that when we were drawing the maps, we can have that for the record. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions now or after the public hearing, whatever is your preference.
Thank you very much for that. You probably will get questions both now and after the public hearing. Unless I'm incorrect, we'll follow our usual process here, where the council will ask any questions of clarification. We don't make statements about what the map should look like until we hear some input from the community. So after we get a chance to ask our questions, we'll open a public comment, both here and online, take your comments, and then after that's finished, we'll bring it back for any closing comments and questions by the council and then discussing the next steps. So with that, any council questions regarding the presentation? Councilwoman Garcia? No? Very good. Anyone in the public who would like to comment on the, or have a question about the presentation? Anyone online?
No, sir.
Very good. I believe that constitutes the public hearing for this particular issue. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for any further discussion. Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, I'd like to ask the consultant timeframe. What kind of timeframe are we taking to do the redistricting, and what's your expectation?
The timeframe is largely dictated by the census. And unfortunately, due to the delay and then the mandated waiting period for California to adjust the boundaries and then to get those final numbers and then allow the public to tweak their maps. We don't expect, after next month's hearing, then we will be back after the first of the year, trying to get the screen. Let's see if we want to get the screen to the timeline. That might be helpful. That might be helpful. Our next meeting's October 5th. It will be similar to this public hearing. And then we'll be back on March 5th to look at maps. So it'll be between October 5th and March 1st. I'm sorry, the public will draw maps, and then we'll come back on April 5th to adopt a map. It must be adopted by April 17.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Strong.
Yes, thank you. And I'm wondering about the anticipated growth aspect of this because we're approving a number of new specific plan areas, and they're coming into our plan, being approved by our planning department in our city for major numbers of units. That doesn't mean all of those are going to occur on a short-term basis, possibly not even within this entire 10-year census period. In that particular case, are you going to be watching for those all the way up to the time you draw maps? Or are you setting some type of a time limit as to at what point you're going to take that data and that's what you're going to go with?
Actually, the law says we must use the data provided by, the state-adjusted data provided by the census. So that would have been a snapshot in time as of April of last year. So those future, to accommodate for future, for future construction and for future developments, we can slightly under-populate a district, but as far as the numbers, the numbers will be what the state provides us, and the law requires we use those. So we cannot adjust those numbers.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any other comments from council? Okay, so our action here tonight is recommended that we receive the report and that we hold a public hearing, which we have done. I'd like to ask the city attorney, do we require any formal action to receive the report or just?
Yes, I believe we'd need a motion to accept the report and then take a vote on that.
Very good.
Can we move to receiving file then? And I was so moved, Mr. Strong.
I have a motion by Councilman Strong, second by Councilman Gregory to receive and file this report. If there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Item number 20 is our next public hearing, a vesting tentative parcel map, PR 20-0018, to subdivide a single 6.54 acre parcel into two smaller parcels. Development Plan 20-09 for the construction of two 12,462 square foot buildings and associated parking and yard areas. A conditional use permit, 21-19 for the establishment of contracted services uses, and a private wastewater permit for two onsite wastewater treatment systems at 3051 Union Road. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. Yes, this is a new development plan located at 3051 Union Road. The first three applications or project numbers that you see on the screen, the development plan, the conditional use permit, and the vesting tentative parcel map, all could have been approved by the planning commission, and they have recommended approval of those. The reason that this project has come before the city council this evening is because of the private wastewater permit. When the city grants an exception to a development needing to attach to the sewer, it is the city council's responsibility to determine whether or not that is appropriate. So here's the location. This is, as I stated, on Union Road. You can see Barney Schwartz Park there to the south of the project. This is right on the boundary of the city, one of the eastern boundaries of the city. You also see the Paso Robles Sports Club and the ravine water park parking lot, the new parking lot they have that's to the south of Highway 46 East. I'm going to show some images in the next slide, so I'm going to give you some points of reference. First, there's a red bubble now that circles a building that you can see from Highway 46. It's intended to show you basically how the site will be viewed from Highway 46. There is a difference in elevation associated with the Werero Creek, so the site that's there in yellow is about 30, 35, maybe even more feet below the building that we'll see on Highway 46 East. You will also see the Vina Robles production facility. It's now shown in the red bubble at the bottom right-hand corner. That's to the southeast of the site, so we'll see what that looks like as well. These are important because the project is located at several of our city gateways. Highway 46 East is considered a gateway to the city, as is Union Road. So the Highway 46 gateway, this is an image, it's a Google Street View that is looking from Airport Road to the south. In the red bubble, that's the metal building that I mentioned or showed on the previous map. And so zoom in, so you can see that metal building, and actually, in the far distance, you can see the Vina Robles production facility. So there is, the Werero Creek lies between those two buildings, and the project also lies at this, it's a little bit above the Werero Creek, but it is at that lower elevation. So the site really won't be seen from Highway 46 East and won't impact the gateway, the Highway 46 East gateway. So from Union Road, I stole this image from the landscape architect that did the landscape plan for the Vina Robles facility. You can actually see the project site there in the rear in blue. You can see the drainage that we'll be discussing this evening, but this is basically what the gateway coming into Paso Robles from Union Road is looking like. And there's some conditions of approval that require the project to mimic the fencing that was used on the Vina Robles production to try to buffer the transition from the agricultural properties to the east of the city and then coming into this, into the actual city limits. So there are some significant circulation changes that are proposed in the area. This is a little excerpt of the map you see in the top right-hand corner. So the site is there in the yellow, with the yellow star. It actually won't really be very heavily, it doesn't influence any of the changes, but this just gives us an idea of what is sort of expected for that area. So Union Road, where it joins with Union Road, is anticipated to be changed in a future roundabout there. You can see in green where the current Union Road is, there is a sewer, a sewer main that's been put in there, which will influence some of the other slides we'll see here in the rest of the presentation. But this gives us an idea of where this part of town is going. You can see Airport Road eventually will connect through the North Chandler Ranch specific plan someday in the future. So there are some challenges associated with this site. This project is in District, or Land Use, District Four of the Airport Land Use Plan, so it does have a density cap, a number of people who can be on the site at any one time. It's also in the floodplain of the Werero Creek, so the applicant will have to work with the city engineer to make sure that the floodplain ordinance is observed. There's also some biological resources on the site of just superimposed a biological map that was prepared by the project biologist. You can see there is a drainage that runs from Union Road, actually starts even further south on the North Chandler property, flows under Union Road, and then flows through the site. And so there are some jurisdictional areas that will have to be observed. And then you can also see the Werero Creek, excuse me, is at the north extent of the property. So the zoning of the property is a commercial light industry zone. It's also within the special conditions area F, which was an overlay that was placed on some properties on the east side of town that were rezoned for commercial uses but are in close proximity to some residential uses. These red houses show where there are houses in proximity to the site. The closest is there, just to the east, it's actually in county land. It's separated by the project by, it's more than 500 feet, and there is a grove of eucalyptus trees there that separate. And so the special conditions have been met through the conditions of approval that are before you in the resolutions this evening. Here's a look at the site plan. As was mentioned, there is a subdivision associated with the project. So this would be parcel one, which would be three and a half acres in size, and parcel two would be just under three acres in size. The identical building is proposed on both sites. The site planning is obviously a little bit different on each. You can see that there's a buffer provided around the seasonal drainage that runs from Union Road to Werero at the north of the site. There's the jurisdictional water outlined. So jumping into the building, this is a really well-designed, well-articulated building. It's largely a concrete tilt-up building, but it's given a large degree of refinement with different materials and articulation of the building with different projections and recesses, and it's a really attractive building for a contract construction business, higher quality than we often see. Really pleasing to see this at the boundary of the city. So that is proposed for both buildings on each side, on each site. Here's a look at the elevations. These are the south elevations, and then the north, which would face Werero, is much more utilitarian and less well-decorated. And then you can see the sides where the front of the building is highly articulated and lots of material changes, and then as it moves to the back, it's a much more simple building. So as I stated, the project is requesting an exception to the requirement to attach to sewer. And so there are long-term plans to bring sewer to this area, to Barney Schwartz and to the Paso Robles, the Racket Club there. And then even further east, there's some potential projects that are going to need to have access to sewer, as well as the North Chandler Ranch project. So here's a look at the sewer infrastructure and then to hope, to give an understanding of how long and what would be anticipated for sewer here. So currently, or with, as a part of the Union Road repaving project, there was a force main put under Union Road. It's not in use currently, but it is there in place, ready to go. It travels to in front of the Paso Robles Sports Club there. There's actually a proposed future lift station that's on the property of the Racket Club, and so that's what the force main is intended to, it reaches that area where the lift station will be. The neighbor to the west of the project that we're considering this evening did put in some sewer line as well, and so there's a portion of the line between the project and that future lift station that's already in place. The applicant will be putting in place the red section you now see, will be putting in the sewer line, but will not be attaching to it immediately because there are gaps, and of course, that lift station is not in place. And those improvements do rely upon some of the future improvements to the area. So the applicant does propose to have two onsite wastewater treatment systems. These will have to comply with the Regional Water Quality Control Board standards, and the city engineer has reviewed those to make sure that that is possible. So staff's recommendation this evening would be to approve the project. There are three resolutions that are required in order to make that, to approve the project. The planning commission did review the project and has recommended approval. The first resolution would certify the mitigated negative declaration that was prepared for the project. As I mentioned, there are a number of potential environmental impacts, and those have been mitigated through that environmental document and the mitigation measures that are also incorporated into the resolutions B and C. Resolution B would approve the plan development, which would include those buildings and site planning that we saw, but would also allow the establishment of two contract service uses, contractor-type uses on each of the properties. And also, the development plan would include that private wastewater permit. And finally, Resolution C would approve the subdivision map that would divide the property into two lots. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing item. We'll start off with council questions of staff. Council questions? Mr. Gregory?
Katie, so the uses on both of these buildings are for commercial type businesses. They're not doing a hotel, or is this like a contracting company, basically?
My understanding of the project is that GTC Construction, who is a contract, excuse me, a concrete construction business, will be in one of the buildings, and the second building is more of a spec building. So the conditional use permit that's in front of you this evening would allow another contract services to use to go into that other building. If some other use, like a hotel, or basically any other use were to be proposed, the conditional use permit would need to be amended. So at this point, what you're considering this evening would just allow two contract construction service uses to be established.
And then the wastewater treatment would be temporary until sewer is there? Is that correct?
That's correct. There are conditions that require them to attach. They'll have to sign an agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hammond?
Yeah, Katie, so does the, if the developer were to sell one of the buildings, does the wastewater treatment permit stay with that property, or does it stay with the developer?
It would run with the land.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Strong?
Yes. This is in a floodplain. So is this a package plant? Is it something that's going to be, wetland is going to be protected so that none of that sewage gets into that water system, which is flowing down to the river and could impact our state permits?
So the city engineer is on the line, so he can answer the more technical aspects of that question. But the septic system has been designed as a, to the Regional Water Quality Control Board's Tier One standard. There are separation requirements and so forth. So the city engineer is available. I believe that the project proponent has stepped to the dais. I don't think, I don't know that the...
Okay, there's no leach field involved as such?
So let's ask the city engineer first, and we will give the applicant an opportunity to speak. Is the city engineer on board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, David Athie, city engineer. So the system's designed as a septic system, so it'll have a tank, a filter, and a small leach field associated with it. This is an underground disposal system, so if there's any surfacing effluent in the future, they'll have to repair the system. In one of the requirements of the Tier One State Board requirements is to have a 100% replacement area. So if this system were to fail by chance, then they would have enough room set aside to put a new septic system in for it. So there's no above-ground treatment, and it does meet the setbacks from the Werero River.
Okay, and from the drainage channel that's going through it?
Yes.
Okay.
Needs both of them.
All right, thank you. Any other council questions? Mr. Hammond?
Maybe, David. Are they conditioned to connect to the city sewer, if, for instance, it were extended?
Yes, so when the lift station is finally installed, you know, right now, we're actively looking at plans for sewer-ing this whole area. One of the big key components is the North Chandler Ranch. So once we know the flows from there, you know, us and the landowners in this area will be involved in installing lift station. Once it is installed and running, a standard condition we use is a requirement to connect once the sewer is available. So we will be working with all the landowners who have that in this area and signing agreements and getting them switched over off a septic, abandon their system, and then connect it into the city sewer system at that time.
And are they also conditioned to help with the lift station development?
Not at this time. We haven't gone that route just because of the large nature of the unknown we have with the North Chandler Ranch. But we could, we could require that, a certain percentage.
Well, that's what we, I think we missed to the south of town in years past. I'm just thinking it might be good that we have some sort of agreement or some sort of a language in there that we can expect something for some support when that does happen.
Okay. Other council questions? Thank you. We do have a representative from the applicant here. Could you give us your name, sir, and we welcome your comments?
Yes, I'm Kyle Harris from Harris Architecture and Design, here to answer questions.
Anything you'd like to add to the presentation?
No, Katie did a fantastic job, so we'll keep it short.
Very pleased that you could be here. Any council questions of the applicant? Thank you very much. Oh, wait, Mr. Gregory? Yeah, I'm here.
So if we were to consider adding a percentage to the lift station costs, would they be objected to that, objecting to that?
I can't be personally for Garrett, but I would think so. He's willing to put in the sewage, or, excuse me, the new sewer main, as was indicated on the presentation. That's something that I don't feel comfortable discussing openly right now. I don't have the answer.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Strong?
All right, well, I was going to go along that same line, because I'm thinking, until we have something that comes in on North Chandler, we don't know what the percentage of use of that lift station will be. So it's a little premature to expect to actually put a designated number in, but we might want some type of a pre-agreement for a percentage, once it's known what a fair percentage would be.
Let's put a pin on that until after the public comment. Any other questions of staff? Very good, thank you, sir. I'll open this up to the public. Same rules apply. If you'd like to speak, please come to the microphone. If you're on the telephone, we are listening. No one coming forward from the room? Anyone online?
No, sir.
Close public comment, bring it back to the council. Now we can enter into discussion. Now we can enter into discussion. Do you want to pick up where you left off, Fred?
Well, I think we've got a pretty good agreement here, but I would like to see that go back to the applicant for that consideration at least and possible negotiation between the city and the applicant on what is a reasonable percentage of the lift station cost as it relates to all the other uses for that lift station.
Councilman Hammond?
Yeah, I agree. Again, that's why I brought it up with the fact that, you know, the shopping center south of town, back in the day, we didn't do that. And now the rest of the citizens, Passerobles are going to have to pay for that bridge and other things that are basically from that development or part of it. And same way here, it's, I mean, the percentage, I don't think anybody can put a number on it. It's an unknown. But on the other hand, I would like to see an agreement that they would participate as much as their portion, you know, would contribute to that, I think is reasonable, so.
Councilman Gregory?
Yeah, David, could you address that for us, please?
Certainly, council member. The, you know, I know in the past that the city has used assessment districts, have a landowner agree to participate in the assessment district for a future improvement. You know, one of the items I also don't know about at this time is that this, this lift station is not currently programmed, I believe, into our wastewater master plan. That is also another avenue we take where we look at connection fees. And once we program this into our master plan, and we haven't done that because the North Chandler hasn't come forward, we thought that at that time, that the, that North Chandler would be responsible for most of this, for a large portion of the cost because of their, because of the size of the development. But those are two avenues we could look at is a, some type of an assessment, you know, agreement. They'll sign a form, agree to an assessment district based on a fair share cost. Is one way you could do this for the project. And that's been done before in the city.
Just a timing, okay, go ahead, go ahead, David.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So I have a timing question. So if they have to hook up to the sewer, they, at what, what point in time do they get charged for that? Now or then? That's in a question.
That would be the, at the time of connection.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other council questions, Mr. Strong?
Well, it's questions or comments now, isn't it?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So I think it's a matter of possibly a bond that would not, would be a long-term bond that could not be executed upon until such time. But we have to look too at the North Chandler and where that natural drainage goes and where, and if there are any connections along Union Road, if there are any connections down on Creston that might be connected to rather than through this lift station. So the only thing that would apply from Chan, North Chandler would be that portion that's actually flowing north or east, I should say, in order to, into this particular area and this lift station. So their percentages have to be fair, basically.
So question for city attorney. If the council wishes to add this requirement, I'm assuming it would come into the resolution addressing the plan development?
Yeah, I believe it would, but--
Would general language to the effect that the applicant would agree to a fair share commitment at the time the costs of the lift station are ascertained?
I think we could add that as a condition. I don't know if the applicant is amenable to that at this point. I don't think we have a representative here who's able to make that commitment. It might be wise to continue this to a date certain, two weeks out, so we can talk to the actual applicant and make sure--
All three actions?
Yeah, continue the whole item.
Other discussion?
I was just going to make a motion that we continue this to the next meeting.
Second. Motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Strong, continue this item until the next meeting. Any further discussion?
Question.
Mr. Hammond?
Maybe staff. Have the other development in the area been conditioned as such? No, not at this point. Most of the development we've had out there isn't in this area. We do have a hotel next to Barney Schwartz. They are currently conditioned to put in their own private forced main, so they will provide their sewer, so they wouldn't be using this pump station. But there's nothing else permitted right now that would feed into that pump station or has been permitted in the last couple of years.
So what about the sports club?
Well, that preceded all this. So that's an existing use that goes back. It's on septic. Eventually, it will need to connect as well. The city engineer might know the timing and kind of the conditions on the sports club, but that's been there for quite a while.
So usually, this would be covered by connection fees. And so it's a little bit unusual to create this requirement, which is why I think we probably need to have a conversation with the developer before we would impose it.
Further discussion? We'll call both, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Under discussion items, item number 21, we have the pre-application for FAA spaceport license. Is the council okay with continuing, or do we need a break? We good? We good?
Good.
Okay. Mr. Sloan?
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. My name is Paul Sloan, and I am the Economic Development Manager for the City of Passerobles. On the agenda this evening is the pre-application for an FAA spaceport license for the Passerobles Airport. With the conversion of the Vandenberg Air Force Base to the Vandenberg Space Force Base, there's developed a momentum toward the creation of a Central Coast space economy. Several months ago, the mayor tasked us with researching opportunities for Passerobles to be able to capitalize on this regional economic development potential. The presentation this evening is the result of that research. Presenting the slide deck tonight is Mr. Bill Britton. And by way of introduction, Mr. Britton is the CIO of Cal Poly. He is a retired Lieutenant Colonel in the United States Air Force. He is the recent recipient of the 2021 Tambalini Technology Leadership Award, and he's an airport commissioner for the Passerobles Airport. And with that, I pass the microphone to Mr. Britton. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and fellow citizens of Paso. This concept and this discussion is really about the future. So let's move quickly into the future. There's an economic development group that has been meeting. It's formulated around Santa Luisbo County. It's referred to as REACH. It's also now connected to the Economic Vitality Commission that was in SLO. That commission is also working with Cal Poly, Vandenberg Air Force Base, and Santa Barbara. And they're looking at developing out on not just the DOD, Department of Defense, and the lift that 30th Space Wing provides, but also combining commercial space launch. So Vandenberg Air Force Base has converted to Space Force Base. And it's actually going to do commercial launches, and it's developing its launch pads for commercial launch. And that's what they refer to as a vertical launch. So that's your classic rocket leaving the ground, going into space. As such, a significant development is going into that. And, and the, the next bullet here, the second bullet about the, the goal is what they believe is going to happen around space commercialization. And it's what REACH is really pushing for. But one asked the question, what about up the grade? What's happening in North County? What, what is REACH doing for North County? So the mayor basically said, I'd like a better answer to that question. And so he asked us to look at really, what are the potential to utilize existing infrastructure in this region, in North County, to align with this REACH space effort? And then, of course, he had some specific goals that he wanted to look at, which is really, what is the benefit for Passerobles? And how do we look at developing a commercial spaceport capability? So what's a spaceport? Well, so everybody here thinks of Cape Canaveral, Cape Kennedy, Vandenberg, the classic rocket launch. So hold that thought, because that's not at all what we're talking about here today. What we're talking about here today is how the world of space delivery has changed significantly. It's about a product they call vertical launch, which is basically an airplane similar to the one you see here. And this is in New Mexico at the New Mexican Air Center. The state of New Mexico has supported it. And that's a vertical launch platform, I'm sorry, a horizontal launch platform. It's an aircraft with twin engines. It takes off, it delivers a secondary payload, and it goes into space. What we found very interesting in our entire research is that spaceports are controlled by FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration, not NASA, not the Department of Defense. And this area of commercial space is something that's new and emerging. And so a spaceport to the FAA is any facility that supports any capacity of space launch. That, that could be a vertical, it could be a horizontal, it could be training, research and development, operations, maintenance support, and all those facets that goes into it. So the spaceport doesn't necessarily mean you're doing launch. It could have all sorts of other facets associated with it. So I wanted to clarify what a spaceport is that we're not talking about. So we're not talking about putting a big rocket in the middle of Passerobles and launching it from there and then shaking us all every day. So not on the agenda. What we are talking about is the kind of aircraft that we see launched from there every day today. That world has changed so significantly, and it delivers payloads to space, and you would never know it from another aircraft at the airport. So the total number of space airports today, commercial spaceports, there's 12 in the U.S. today. There's many communities who are wishing that they could do that, but they have complicating aspects. Complications such as they have commercial flights that are regularly scheduled in. They can't interrupt the commercial schedule. They have other high-use space areas overhead. They have high population density. So the commercial spaceport community is looking for communities just like Paso that offers the opportunity for space platform delivery. So with those on the list here, a little bit more in-depth, and we find that there's one in, it's Cecil Airfield, now Cecil Spaceport, that's in Florida, that if you looked at their plan, it's very similar to what we are. It's very similar in size. They started as a small regional airport, and they've just signed an agreement with several horizontal launch companies to do space launch. So when I talk about this horizontal, what are you, what are you telling me? What's the platform look like so I feel a little bit more comfortable? This is an example of what we would submit in the pre-application, which is a, this is an unmanned vehicle. There's no pilot on it. It's the size of a normal aircraft. It does have a rocket on it, or it has a motor that's similar to a rocket on it. It takes the payload to a certain altitude in space. It does a kickover, it throws the payload out, it goes to altitude, and actually comes back, lands at the airport, reconstitutes, and goes back out again. So this is becoming a very normalized industry. So we're at the front of that. We're at the cusp of that. And what we look at is if this is an evolving area where there is going to be a tech connectivity to it, this really fits what we would look at for the future. There's other kinds of platforms that could be looked at. These are three of them. Upper left hand has a payload underneath of it. As you can see, it's strapped to the bottom. This is no different than some of the aircraft that fly into and out of Paso today. The one on the upper right is a rocket-assisted aircraft. And the one on the bottom, which is probably more famous, it goes to just at atmospheric conditions. There's a big argument, are the passengers really astronauts or not? I'll let NASA figure that out and the others. But, but all of those are options that could utilize the runway that we have here today without major modifications and major disruption to the airport as we have it today. There's one more thing I want to talk about because I keep using the word payload. So I'd like you to understand what that payload is. And so, of course, I used a Cal Poly payload. The little box on the right-hand side of the picture, that is a cube sat or small sat. That's what these platforms are delivering into space in a low Earth orbit. So they're literally going up. One we read about today goes up to 63 miles up in space, drops a payload, and comes back. That payload is a little larger than a shoebox. And the availability of these payloads and how many are being produced, I will tell you, we have students at Cal Poly who produce these as their senior project. They design it, they build it, and they launch it on platforms, and they command and control it around the world today. So this is real. This is not the art of the possible. This is really happening today. The way the platform on the left does is it goes to a certain altitude. It flips over, that triangle on the bottom opens up, and it throws that little box out, and it goes to altitude. That's how they're delivering these small sets into space today. The advantage to the commercial market is, instead of having to pay for that big rocket, you use that little aircraft, and it's recoverable. So instead of having to pay for the cost of a big rocket, the launcher, the booster, and all that, you're using this platform. It goes up, and it comes back, and it starts all over again. So this is what we're proposing, is to really, is to develop the concept further, submit for comment. So we've met with the Airport Commission and the City Council tonight. Submit what's really called the pre-application format. So it's kind of a two-step, if you will, that the FAA has a pre-questionnaire, and they'd really like to know, are you serious? And do you have an idea of what you're talking about? Or you're just wasting our time? And how much energy and effort are we going to have to put into it? So our recommendation tonight is to submit that pre-application that we've been working on, and then really start the process with the Airport Commission of filling in the blanks and submitting for the FAA license. And then, of course, development and economic development plan, and build out the tech part in conjunction with the spaceports, since they are regionally located in the same area. So what's really interesting is the cost of doing this is really us, that is Paul and I and Roger and a few others that are doing this regularly. It's very similar to the application the FAA has for the airport side. It just asks questions about the spaceports and the concept and the delivery vehicles. So there is no additional cost to submit. We'll provide these initial answers. They then begin the formal licensing requirements and process. A lot of that data is what is already reported on the FAA data report. And it, we think it will be approximately a year, and the license would be awarded. Now, that doesn't mean you have to launch or have a launch platform at the end of that year. That license is nothing more than an operating, referred to as a member of the Global Spaceport Authority, as a hunting license, to be able to go and look and build your developmental plan for how you want to run your spaceport. So it really begins the process of changing what we do at the airport and how we produce things in the future. The next step and timelines, these are all estimates, so we're only a little off on some of these. But again, I think by submitting the initial package, we would be ready to then further develop and work with the Airport Commission, develop the licensing process, turn that in. I think it is possible we could have a decision by the end of '21 or '22. So a year, year and a half timeframe, we should have something from the FAA if there are no considerations that are, you know, foul negative. In the meeting, the reason for the pre-package is the FAA likes to know how much trouble do we anticipate? And, and so far, we haven't really seen any negativity. And I think it's something that meets very well with the FAA. It's very interesting that when we met with the FAA, the department that we work with is not the normal department. It's actually an office stood up to create commercial spaceports. And their sole purpose is to create these spaceports. So their job is to make sure these things can really happen. So they're geared to go to help us be successful. I think the benefits, as we look through all these things, I'm going to certainly harp and jump up and down on the Cal Poly opportunities because we build these small sets and we launch them. But the opportunity to combine a technology quarter and spaceport and create new jobs. We're two hours south of Silicon Valley. There is no commercial launch available in Silicon Valley or in Sunnyvale. That's all federal and DOD. And the rules and the restrictions are a mile and a half long. This would be a huge advantage to those companies. There are numerous launch companies around the world that are creating. Paul and I have looked, there's a list of over 26 different companies already creating horizontal launch. They're all available. They're all talking to different communities now, so I think that would be beneficial. The opportunity for education and training, that is to roll in Questa Community College, Cal Poly Research, private firms for that research arm. Again, remember, the spaceport doesn't have to be launch, just only launch. It can be research, it can be manufacturing. It can be other things that we want to have established in the area. Grants and other opportunities from the federal government. I was on a call today with a Washington DC-based think tank. There is no federal organization that is working with private commercial entities for research with colleges and universities. We would be the first that would have that concept to turn in. That puts us at the door first. That's a huge opportunity and a leg up in that area of research, particularly for federal grants. I think the other element then is the ecosystem that would be created around the airport with the tech park concept, with the landing. The ability to expand fiber and other things into that regional area and to really grow the community outward in that direction, I think, is a benefit. And it's all things that the community partners in that area need today. So we would be enhancing that for the community. So with that, I'll close and open up for questions if there are any.
Thank you very much. That is a lot of information to process, but I do appreciate the time and effort that's been put into this by yourself and Mr. Sloan. It was-- It was a glimmer when we started and I think it's something that's quickly been fanned into a real flame of opportunity for the city of Paso Robles. Did want to ask a couple of questions. First of all, has our Airport Commission seen this presentation?
The Airport Commission has seen this presentation, yes.
Very good. And then obviously, one of the concerns about the people that live here already would be how would that affect the operation of the airport? We have a general aviation airport. Will private pilots still be able to use it?
Yes, the intent is not to disrupt the current aviation philosophy at all. And the important part that FAA will look at is what the operational control we want to put into place and then having the partners that move into it to adhere to that operational control that we put into place. So we have a lot of control over the destiny of that.
And it sounds as if moving forward, if we do achieve this appellation for our airport, that we will be able to find what type of space role it would fulfill. It might be horizontal launch, it might be research and training, it might be whatever fits our mold here.
That is correct.
Thank you. Other questions, Mr. Gregory?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. So on the licensing, who is the licensee, licensor?
It would be a license through the airport and it would be with the FAA Department of Space Commercial Spaceports.
And the economic advantages for us would be for attracting companies, getting jobs. What about, I guess, selling fuel at the airport?
Yes, all things to do with the airport are absolutely an option because it's another tenant that would be utilizing resources.
And as far as the licensing and regulation, that's in the hands of the FAA?
That is absolutely 100% FAA-controlled. What's interesting is the payloads and the usage is then controlled by Commerce because it's commercial, and then NASA and DOD. So you could have mixed payloads and mixed opportunities.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strong.
Yes, so there's no conflict if, for instance, we developed an aspect of air freight at the airport as well?
No, there's no, again, it's a scheduled delivery vehicle.
Very good. And what about heavier payloads? Doesn't have to be a shoebox size because we're already capable for up to 727s, so could it be a heavier payload?
Right now, we're thinking about this as being the SmallSat in the low-Earth orbit because that is a growing constellation. If you look at all the economic development reports, that SmallSat, LEO, Low-Earth Orbit delivery is where all the commercial is going. The larger platforms require that vertical launch. That's why they go higher up.
Thank you. Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, Bill, we're an uncontrolled airport. Have you seen in your research that these kind of facilities require a tower?
Yes, some of them have moved to a tower, absolutely. Some of them have not. They create their own command and control structure. And it's one of the things that we would look at is what are the options that we have? And we would certainly set it up to what we have available today.
Okay, so you're saying that these can operate at an uncontrolled airport?
They can operate at uncontrolled.
Right. And to your knowledge, as far as the aircraft that they're using, weight limits, you know, our runway is like 106,000 pounds, something like that. So what, I mean, are we fitting within that range of what our capacity is on the runway?
Absolutely. The platforms that we are submitting in the submission use 3,000 feet of runway, not six. So they're absolutely fitting into the requirements we have established today.
And I imagine they're seeking these kind of airports, in other words, Vandenberg's sitting down there with a huge runway, although it's federally controlled. So is that one of the reasons why they're trying to seek out these type of airports?
You just hit the nail on the head. Being federal-controlled with PAR, I'm sorry, you've got to have prior approval for everything that you do. There's all the rules and restrictions of operating out of there. And the commercial market has already said to Vandenberg that you've got way too many rules for us to operate here. They're actually shipping platforms from California to Texas, to Florida, because it's easier to launch from there than it is here. So again, what we're offering is another opportunity for something and an easier delivery platform from California.
Yeah, I would think this would be an ideal location for this kind of thing because we're close to the ocean where they typically do those kind of launches or over non-populated areas and then return back a short distance to a runway. Very interesting. I think it's a great opportunity. The only question I had too is that, you know, we did hear at the Airport Commission, and I don't believe they actually gave a recommendation either way. And so that's typically how we run. You're a member of the board, obviously, out there.
Yeah, so again, the whole licensing aspect, I would say is going to be completely controlled by the Airport Commission process.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Gregory?
Yeah, Bill, just one more question. On the, if, this is speculated, but if we should have to need a tower, does the FAA provide that staffing for us?
I would rather let Roger answer that, but it's a whole process to have to get to that level. And I think it would be something that would take a lot of consideration and a lot of different thought before we.
Okay, it's a little early for that question, probably. Thank you.
So questions from citizens' perspective, sonic booms?
The intent is not to have any kind of sonic boom. The payloads that they have have basically a dual-engine setup is one of the ones that we have looked at where it has a regular engine for takeoff to about six miles and then it kicks into a hypersonic engine that takes it to the rest of the altitude. So again, the intent would not to have that kind of operation. And again, that's something we control in the operational concept that we develop for utilization.
And then in looking at the other spaceports around the nation, how have they capitalized on their status as spaceport? In other words, has it turned out to be financially successful for them? Have they expanded the job base? What's the experience?
So it's really interesting because most of those that are establishing one are establishing one in areas where there isn't much going on. So Oklahoma is an example. After being a spaceport for 15 years, they've just signed their first agreement with a delivery vehicle. Now, part of this is also that the delivery vehicles, that is, the aircraft, the delivery platforms have matured very quickly just recently. And there was a lot that those platforms have to be also licensed. So in order to deliver, they have to go through FAA licensing as well. So those are just now hitting the market where they're beginning to expand significantly. The other part is, is in some areas, the local area has not agreed because they want to do too much. They want to do vertical and horizontal. And the vertical is a massive environmental impact discussion. And so when they take on more than that they really are prepared to do, that's created a significant pushback.
Okay, and then as far as local partners and local interest, I know I've been speaking about this for a couple of weeks and people seem genuinely interested in it, but in our reach partners, other organizations in the county, have you received any feedback from them on this?
Yes, well, we know Cal Poly is very interested because again, they have a problem finding delivery platforms for their particular products that you design. We've also talked to the state level who said this is very reassuring because reach to them was not reaching the entire central coast. This says to the state of California that the entire central coast is now embedded and engaged and the activity runs from Santa Barbara all the way up to Paso Robles. So it was something that to them was missing and is now would fulfill that requirement. So I think that's an extreme positive. On the federal side, I've been talking to quite a few think tanks and others about the potentials and they're very excited because the entire commercial delivery architecture is unfounded. It's in the infant stages. And so they're looking for ways to study it, to do research on it, to see what the long-term effects will be. And the more they can get enrolled earlier to be part of that process, the more excited they are.
Very good. Any other questions before we move on?
Yes, sir. I think you were trying to ask, but as far as the jobs, do you know how many, roughly how many jobs that would bring to our area?
I don't have an estimate this time, but I would believe that as part of our solution set developing an economic development package, which would be able to estimate those kinds of things, would be an imperative delivery as part of this.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. We will open this up for public comment. Anyone that has a comment, this is your opportunity. Same rules apply. The microphone is yours. Seeing no one rise in the room, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Can I raise your hand? You can just walk to the microphone. Good evening.
Hi, Nancy Mello, 710 Night Court. I was wondering about, you said the sonic booms, but I was just wondering about the general noise, if it's more than the jets that are taking off now or if it's going to be twice as much? And the exhaust and all the stuff that comes out of the jets, what's it going to do to our air quality? I mean, it sounds interesting, but I'm just curious.
Okay, we'll try to get some answers. Thank you. I'm looking all around the room now. Anyone? Anyone? Okay, anyone online?
Yes, sir. Paul Hott.
Paul, welcome.
Hi, Mayor. Thank you for taking my call. I work with Sensorio and after speaking to the ownership there and my senior management staff, our biggest concern is the noise level to piggyback off of the last speaker. Do we have any studies or do we intend to do any studies? Or have studies been done from the other 12 spaceports on what the increase in the noise pollution is?
Okay, we'll get an answer for you. Thank you for that.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
No, sir.
We'll close public comment, bring it back to the council. Mr. Britton, can you address some of those questions for us? I think the answer is we define this, but the questions were general noise levels and what other spaceports have experienced, the impact of jet exhaust on local air quality, and the relative increase in noise level, especially with a nearby operation such as Sensorio.
I think the answer to that is the beauty of the two-step process that the FAA has in place. They'll require us to do some of those studies and analysis to turn in with the formal licensing. They'll also look for impact into the air traffic around the area and they'll look for noise level. That's always part of the FAA process. And so all of those will be required for us to look at. Then the decision of the platform to bring into Paso will also be part of that as the operations concept will address the kinds of payloads, the kinds of platforms, and the noise levels associated with those.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Strong?
On that same line, the flight path probably has something to do with the noise. So is it going to be on a 1%, 2%, 3%? What's the flight path of these vehicles?
They'll have to follow the current pattern as published by FAA for departure.
Okay, you don't know what that is?
Roger, do you want to address all that?
We'll have to put that into the report and licensing.
Okay, because right now we're using a 1%, which has a lot more noise than if you have a 3% or a 6%. Because it makes a huge difference in the amount of noise. Thank you.
Mr. Hammond?
I was going to ask Roger, actually, a couple of questions if you don't mind.
Roger, you want to come on up here?
Roger, so moving into this kind of a different thought, I mean, it's definitely a huge chapter change in our airport after 60, 70, 80 years there. I think first thing coming to my mind is, you know, the impact, of course, to locals and what's going to happen there. But the other half is, you know, being as you're the manager of the airport, is land use and space available. In other words, you know, I see it, you know, that we do have this designation, there might be, you know, you build it, they're all going to come. So do we have the space? I mean, what is your thought here right now with available space that we do have currently on the airport? Are there areas that we could accommodate this kind of thought?
I think the first thing they should want to look at is perhaps the perception of a lot of people, and that is the amount of available land that we have at the airport. Just to very quickly illustrate for you, if you were to look at the picture on the screen, the right-hand side of the picture, the black section, three-quarters of that is committed to a solar farm. And we've been working on that for a number of years. So if that's developed, there's 30 acres to the east of that between there and the runway that's available. The rest of that and most everything out around the runways is all committed to runway safety areas, clear zones, and the required geometry that we have to have for the runways themselves. So what you're asking is how are we going to accommodate all of these things? You can continue to follow my philosophy, which is back off and say, no, 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 you guys just wait, we don't have the room for you. But that's not making any progress. And so what has to happen here is let's pursue these, pursue these things. Let's see where they go with them. We have the ability to make just one more thing fit around the airport someplace. We'll make that work or we'll decide now we're going to have to make this adjustment to, in order to accommodate this activity. And those things are all going to be a function of Airport Commission first, review what the needs are, review how those tie together and how that works for the future of the airport and for aviation. And then that all has to come to you, the council, to make those final decisions. Do we want to go this route or is this not appropriate? And as these plans and studies are reviewed and implemented, they come to you for a final approval. And I think that's the way we'll have to work it.
So our question before us right now is, you know, the council, do we want to pursue an application? I think is essentially what we want to try to talk about. Do you see any issues with council moving forward at this point? I mean, the Airport Commission has heard the item and I think in general, I was there and I were listening, most everybody was, you know, pretty interested as well. I mean, basically, I guess, is this anything time-sensitive with regard to making an application to the FAA?
I don't see anything from the airport perspective that would prevent going forward with this first step. You don't know until you ask. So ask the question, try to get permission, see where we go with this. Recognize that not one of these issues is going to be resolved with a simple statement that, oh, that's okay. It's going to require some work, it's going to require some consideration by the Airport Commission, which they will do at your direction and make those kinds of decisions, make those kinds of recommendations. And then you'll decide, is the next step appropriate or not?
Very good. That's all I had. Thank you.
Mr. Strong?
Okay, we're in comment now, so I'm going to go way back. I mean, you know, I sometimes get a look back because I happen to be within two miles of the Apollo 17 launch. And that was the only night launch. And that's as close as I could get to Cape Canaveral at the time. And when that thing went off, you could read a license plate two blocks away. It lit it up, lit up the night that much. That's not what we're going to have. And that's not what we want at our airport. So just to be sheer, clear, that's a real massive vertical launch. We're talking something totally, totally different here. This is more like maybe a 727 coming in or even something even a little lighter than that, maybe not even as noisy. But the interesting thing is the Bay Area example is a good one because I happen to be on planning, planning the committee for their Airport Commission when we created the Manetta International Airport. And the biggest problem even there was the fact that you have Oakland, you have San Francisco, you have San Jose, but you also have Ames, you also have three general aviation airports, all flying in that airspace. You don't have any room for this because they're having trouble just regulating the planes they've already got there and keeping them safe. So they have to go somewhere else. We are a very logical place, number one. Number two, in the 1990s, we had a company called Parsons that was one of our airport consultants for land use. Parsons is the largest airport operator in the world. And what they saw for our airport was a tremendous potential for air freight and this would still be compatible with that. Now, further at our airport, but a lot of the public doesn't know, is when we had a gentleman by the name of Secretary of the Interior, Judge Clark, who has a ranch, had a ranch right out here, he's now deceased, but his family is still here. He was the secretary for President Reagan and because he lived here, the FAA came in and improved our airport to 727-capable so that Air Force One could land here. We only need 200 more feet to make it 747-capable. And those planes can do a lot amount of freight that can bring in millions of dollars to our community and relieve our tax burden for our citizens. So these are the considerations. And all of everybody at the national level in aviation is working to clean those engines up and clean that exhaust up. So there's no, you can't assume that there's going to be a lot of air pollution. Probably not. And this is just another toolbox in the box. It's like any kind of toolbox you put together. You can't have a toolbox with a wrench and no pliers or a hammer and no screwdriver. If we're going to have a successful airport, we eat all the tools we can get. And I'm willing to support this totally.
Maria?
I just wanted to also thank Mr. Paul Sloan for going out there. And we've been asking him to think outside the box for us. And I just want to appreciate that he's out there trying to find new areas. We keep talking about, you know, not having all our eggs in one basket. So I really do appreciate that. That was my comment, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gregory?
I'd like to make a motion, but I'd like to make a comment first. I think, just a mirror of what Roger said, the whole application process will reveal a lot about how it's going to work and what's going to happen. So I'd be interested in going ahead and making a motion that we authorize staff to submit the pre-application information for the FAA and continue evaluating the spaceport license opportunity with the Air and continue evaluating the spaceport license opportunity with the Airport Commission.
Second. Motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Hammond. Further discussion on the motion? I'd just like to make a couple of comments before we vote. For 40 years now, we've been saying we have an airport that's a diamond in the rough and looking for a way to polish that diamond up. And I think thanks to these two gentlemen looking at things just a little bit differently than we have in the past, we have the chance of actually putting that polish on our airport. I think this preserves our general aviation service, which we've enjoyed over the years, while at the same time amplifying those services. It takes advantage of all the disadvantages that we suffered from in trying to develop our airport in the past, because we were so far from the urban centers, because we had no scheduled passenger service, because we, all the reasons that we couldn't spur on development of the airport now become advantages to us in this particular scenario. It sets up new industries, broadband. It's going to be a lever to bring more broadband into our community. It's going to diversify the job base. And I get two reactions from folks whenever I talk about this. The first one is, huh? The second is, oh. And the reason for the second reaction is because we're looking at the future of the future. We are used to thinking of the future in a certain way. This helps us think of the future in a different way. This is the future of the future for Passeroles. So with that, if there's no further discussion, we'll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Yes, or I?
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. I have a request for a five-minute break. We'll be back in just a few.
How's that?
Yay!
Yay! All right, thank you, and good evening, councilmembers. I am Julie Dolan, the Director of Community Services for the City of Passeroles. At the July 8 city council meeting, council awarded a contract for the renovation of the four tennis courts at Centennial Park. This item was pulled from the consent calendar as members of the audience wished to recommend that pickleball shadow lines be added to the project. Council directed staff to address the issue of shadow lines at a subsequent Parks and Recreation Advisory Meeting. Tonight, I am seeking more specific direction from city council regarding pickleball court capacity before potentially reintroducing the matter to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, noting that a decision to initiate construction on new pickleball courts at Sherwood Park was made by council in February of 2019. A brief review of the progression of pickleball in Passeroles documents players' desire for greater court capacity. Moreover, it reminds us of the significant public input the city received from both tennis and pickleball players in deciding how to best meet the demand for pickleball in our community. So we can see from this slide, in 2014, the city roller hockey rink was converted to five pickleball courts. And about four years later, Passeroles Pickleball requested the conversion of one of our Centennial tennis courts to four pickleball courts. This, of course, generated significant public input, public outreach occurred among tennis and pickleball players. The consensus was to build new pickleball courts at Sherwood Park and to not reduce tennis court capacity. As we move along in the timeline, 2019 saw city council endorsement of the Sherwood Master Plan, and it happened to be at that very same council meeting that city council directed staff to prioritize the pickleball courts at Sherwood. We were awaiting word about a state grant to fund Phase 1 of the Sherwood Master Plan, and regrettably, we were not granted that money at that time. Moving forward to 2020, of course, the pandemic hit and the city suspended nonessential capital projects in response to the pandemic. And now moving to today, or to this time, 2021, we have a new request for shadow lines on at least one Centennial tennis court. With the update of the Sherwood Master Plan occurring in the same timeframe as specific discussion about pickleball court capacity, there were several opportunities for the public to provide input about adding pickleball courts to Sherwood Park and pickleball court capacity in general. Eight opportunities, in fact. This slide lists over a year of public workshops and meetings and includes actual photos of public input events. The Sherwood Master Plan and strategies to increase pickleball court capacity were also fully vetted by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee prior to city council's February 2019 decision to proceed with constructing pickleball courts at Sherwood Park. The committee did not support shadow lines on existing tennis courts. The number of both tennis and pickleball courts in Passeroles is poised for change, with increased capacity planned for pickleball and a temporary reduction in capacity for tennis. There are currently five public pickleball courts and four tennis courts at Centennial Park. Four additional tennis courts at Sherwood Park will be closed due to their poor condition once the Centennial courts are renovated. Completion of the Sherwood Park Master Plan will add up to eight pickleball courts, for a total of 13 in our community. The four tennis courts at Sherwood will eventually be relocated from the north to the south side of Scott Street, maintaining a total count of eight city tennis courts. Additionally, the Olson-South Chandler Ranch specific plan currently proposes a total of 14 new pickleball courts as a part of the overall development. The 10 courts in the area referred to as the "overlook" will likely be intended for residents of the development, but that still is a benefit in meeting overall community demand for the sport. And the four internal creek will likely be intended for public use. There are fiscal considerations, of course. When round four grant funding was announced by the state of California, city staff resubmitted an application for nearly $8 million to fund Phase 1 of the Sherwood Park Master Plan to include construction of six to eight pickleball courts. We await the announcement of awards expected late this September. Recently, city council indicated interest in possibly allocating some American Rescue Grant funds to a recreation project or program. The construction of pickleball courts may be considered for such an allocation. Savvy budget management during the pandemic enabled the city to maintain robust reserves, and city reserves were mentioned in the February 2019 directive as a source of funding for this project. We estimate the cost to design and build six to eight pickleball courts at just over $700,000. The Sherwood Master Plan calls for new restrooms and diagonal parking on Scott Street as related amenities. Council may direct staff to add these amenities to the project now or wait until grant or other funding is secured. The following options are available to council this evening. Of course, taking no action is an option, but it may perpetuate confusion on the part of pickleball and tennis players, uncertain of the city's intention to begin construction of new courts at Sherwood Park. Option number two would be to reconfirm the February 19, 2019 decision to initiate the design and construction of up to eight new pickleball courts at Sherwood Park, directing staff to start this project as soon as possible. Option two will clarify the city's intentions to increase pickleball capacity for the long term without reducing tennis court capacity. This option satisfies concerns on the part of pickleball and tennis players, and probably most importantly, is respectful of previous community input on the matter of pickleball capacity. Option three, council could specify amendments such as shadow lines to the 2019 directive for review by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. This option could, however, produce decisions which contradict previous public input. And any recommendation that involves dual or exclusive use of one or more tennis courts at Centennial Park for pickleball is of even greater concern now than it was in 2019, since the four tennis courts at Sherwood Park are in significant disrepair, with permanent closure imminent. Closure of the Sherwood courts would reduce city tennis court capacity by 50% until new tennis courts are constructed, per the Sherwood Park Master Plan. And finally, option four always is to provide alternative direction to staff. Staff recommends option two. Reconfirm the February 19, 2019 city council directive to initiate the design and construction of the pickleball area at Sherwood Park, to include up to eight lighted pickleball courts, and directing staff to start the project as soon as possible. And with that, I'm happy to address questions regarding pickleball court capacity. We also have Maintenance Superintendent Frida Berman on hand for questions regarding court construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gregory.
Hey, Julie, on your estimates for construction, are the angled parking spots on the road, on the street?
Correct.
Okay. And is there a restroom nearby that could be used intermally, or can we put in temporaries?
Currently, we have the fairly recently replaced restroom that is very close to the main parking lot at Sherwood, so that would be a bit of a hike. There is a very small restroom as a part of Sherwood Forest. I guess it's possible that the restroom at the senior center could be utilized to some degree, but I don't like to encourage that. It could overwhelm them. But yes, there are some restrooms on site already if we had to delay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other council questions?
Are we, do we have the parking area across the street from the pickleball courts that would currently be on the other side of Scott Street in that plan as well? Is any of that parking lot proposed to be developed at that time?
I'm glad that you actually brought up the other side of Scott Street. Thank you, Councilman Strong. I want to emphasize that what we have now is a Phase 1 of the Sherwood Park Master Plan. So the money that we have applied to the state for, that $8 million, would just be to take care of all of the amenities on the south side of Scott Street. So we wouldn't be changing anything in the foreseeable future on the north side of Scott Street.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Julie, clarify for me, when this issue was heard by Parks and Rec previously, was that, after taking public input and conversation, was that decision regarding the conversion of a tennis court or the shadow line is being proposed?
It was a very extensive public process, Mayor Martin. We started, actually, prior to that meeting, we had a very focused, facilitated meeting with some representatives of tennis and some representatives of pickleball, and a myriad of strategies were brought before the group or brainstormed by the group in terms of ways of increasing capacity. And so by the time it came before the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, those various strategies were put before them. strategies were put before them. The one item that Parks and Rec was most adamant about is, yes, we do need to increase the capacity for pickleball, but not at the expense of another sport. So they did not want to see that reducing capacity on tennis courts. And so shadow lines, to some degree, would reduce capacity on tennis courts. Certainly, converting a tennis court to pickleball courts absolutely would do the same.
Thank you. Other questions from council? Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It is that time. It's public comment time. If you're in the audience and you'd like to speak, I know some of you have already filled out speaker cards, so please come on up. If you've decided in the interim that you want to speak, please fill out a speaker card and bring it up. And I'm sure we'll have people on the telephone line also. So, Mr. Werner, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and members of the public. I'm Larry Werner. I am the pickleball ambassador for the Paso Robles region. I'd like to introduce the members of the pickleball club board who are here tonight. Nancy Mello, if you could raise your hand. Nancy is the president of our club. She's an excellent pickleball player and plays on Court One, which means that she's like, yeah. Then we have Linda Tedeschi, who is our treasurer. Raise your hand there. And Craig Lee, who is the secretary. And I think you all probably know Steve Sidwell, but you probably don't know what he's doing now. He is the director of country membership for the International Federation of Pickleball. The goal of that organization is to make pickleball an Olympic sport. In order to do that, they have to have 75 countries signed up to promote the sport, and they have 58 signed up so far, from countries as small as Samoa to Russia, as large a country.
Any Olympic hopefuls in this group?
I'm sorry?
Any Olympic hopefuls in this group?
Uh, yeah. Our president. And Barbara Ferguson, who is our vice president, could not attend tonight. So they have deferred comments to me, so they will not be speaking. So first of all, I'd like to thank the council for providing the direction back in 2019, which has been, you know, explained again. Then pandemic, two and a half years later, you know, we're going to move forward. And I appreciate the positivity in doing that. You know, you're all aware of the popularity of the sport, the challenges that we're having, and, you know, the fact that we pay our own way, plus give a fair chunk of money to the city every year. We build our own facilities. We maintain our own facilities. And so what I just will summarize is that we support option two, because we think that that is the best approach. But what we would appreciate is, since we've lost so much time already, is if we could find a way to expedite that process and move it along as quickly as possible, that would be greatly appreciated. Also, one of the things I'd like to have, open for discussion at a later point, is that we'd also like to pursue a further discussion on the lights at Centennial Park, which was part of that discussion back in 2019, that got dropped in the whole pandemic issue. So that would be a way to increase capacity in a fairly quick way and fairly reasonable expense. So I'm just open to any questions you might have about what we're talking about tonight or the document that we presented to you.
Very good. Thank you.
One thing I'd just like, if they're taking questions first, then I have one last comment.
No, we're still in public comment, so if you're finished, we'll ask if anybody else wants to speak.
Okay. I'd just like to add that August 8 is National Pickleball Day, for the first time in history.
So.
So, August 8, yeah.
Ann Lander's question, is it a gift-giving occasion or?
I'm sorry, what?
Is it a gift-giving occasion?
Um, well, that's up to you.
Get the mayor out there.
Yeah, I want you to know I am developing a line of pickleball greeting cards, and thank you, Larry. Appreciate it.
Bumper stickers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak? Come on. Come on along. Welcome.
Hi. So my name's John Siemens. I'm a USPTA pro that's taught on the Centennial Courts for 30 years. We are also hoping for option two, and we're grateful that you guys are considering that. So I don't, I just want to reinforce that thank you. Yeah, we spent, you know, two years ago, we went through all this, and unanimously you guys agreed that let's push for pickleball courts to be the first thing constructed. We still like that idea. I don't know that I need to provide any argument any further to support anything else. I don't want to waste anybody else's time. So thank you for that consideration, pickleballers, and we hit balls with paddles. Let's just enjoy it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room who'd like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Pam Gray here in Paso Robles, 36 years, and tennis player and over here in Ramada Drive, as far as my location. I'm seeking in behalf of most of us tennis players. I have done pickleball also. In fact, I first started learning pickleball and even being introduced to it at TTR with Judy and Ralph, which was awesome. And I know that we're so limited with our spacing with the tennis courts at this time. Unfortunately, the ones at Sherwood, they're trying to resurface them, think a five-year-old could do better than what's gone on so far. But they have lights there, and we don't even get to use the lights. You know, they're not active, they're not, you know, going on. So when they're talking about adding now the new court for pickleball and they're specifying lighted, will that justify anything for the tennis court if and when they're finally put up?
We'll get an answer to that.
Okay. And then also, I wanted to make a nice comment regarding the upgrade to the restrooms there at Sherwood. They are awesome, and they were a long time coming. They've been needed, and there's so many of the public services that use them too. MG E uses them, the city workers and the trash guys use it and all that, so that's a real plus and update. Now, in position with the tennis courts, I'm understanding when I was talking to Jan that the new additional ones are supposed to be over there by what was considered the dog park? So is that the location that they're referring to for those? So what will happen to the existing four that's there at Sherwood right now?
We'll get an answer to that.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I wanted to reiterate some stuff on that.
And the reason I do that is so we don't get, you know, sidetracked on different conversation, we get all the answers at the same time. So don't feel put upon. Anyone else? Oh, it's not that hard. Come on. Welcome.
Welcome. My name's Jan Dalens, and I live at 1120 Hickory Lane. I've been a tennis player and a coach at the high school for over 18 years. I finally retired. I just wanted to say thank you for all of this, because again, we were hoping for option two. One of the things that I know that a lot of people were saying, they can coexist together, but people that play tennis and people that play pickleball, if you have played tennis before, understand that they do not coexist together. And so we're all for getting more tennis courts out, excuse me, more pickleball courts out there for those people. I will let you know that the master plan is, we used to have the, where the dog park is, that was where the tennis courts were going to go. And the dog park people took that over, and so then that's why Sherwood Park is still where it is. It's one of the reasons why it's still where it is, because we never got to put our tennis courts there. So the tennis courts are going right next to, right across the street from Senior Sanchez. So it's on the other side of that parcel. Anyways, I just wanted to say thank you from the bottom of my heart, from being a tennis coach, especially for the kids that come out to play. Those courts are filled every weekend. There are people waiting to use the courts on the weekends. There are kids that use those courts in the afternoons, not in the mornings when these guys are all out there, but they are used, and the pickleball lines are not good for tennis, especially for kids that are learning. It's a distraction. So anyways, that's all I wanted to say.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online?
Chris Iverson?
Are you with us, Chris?
Good evening.
Howdy.
Good evening.
Hello? Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Chris. Can you hear us?
Okay, yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Martin, members of the council. There's really no need for me to talk. I really appreciate the position of the pickleball players. We have a wonderful tennis facility and really appreciate the upgrades and the repair, repairs that are being done. So I'd rather be talking about the spaceport. That's very, I, so good work, and thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris. Have a good evening.
I'm certainly in favor of option two. Yeah. Bye-bye.
Bye now. Anyone else online?
No, sir.
Very good. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the council. There were a couple of questions asked, Julie, if you can fill us in, please. The subject of lights, both at the pickleball courts and lights on newer existing courts at Sherwood.
Yes. So Mr. Werner is absolutely correct. We were given some guidance by council to install what we presented to you, which were low-cost LED lighting. Mr. Werner did some additional research and indicated that he was not comfortable with that lighting, felt that, and correct me if I'm wrong on this one, Larry, that the lights would get in the eyes of pickleball players. And that's what we had come to the table with. I do have a memo that I can forward at some point, if this will be helpful, that I prepare for Mr. Fruchy about pickleball lighting, giving the options for something other than those LED lights. And of course, everything is prohibitively expensive when you start talking about light standards and that sort of thing. But that's where we were with the inexpensive option. I'd be happy to talk to you more, Mr. Werner, about any other options that you might be aware of since that discussion two years ago, and certainly we can work with Frida Berman and see if there are some other options that might work.
Okay. And then the question about what will happen to the existing courts at Sherwood when the new ones are developed?
Yes. So we did acknowledge that the existing tennis courts, Mr. Mayor, is that what we're saying?
Mm-hmm.
That the existing tennis courts at Sherwood, we really are sort of limping along to keep them open, because the Centennial Courts are closed completely right now for renovation. So I would be the first to acknowledge that the Sherwood Courts are not in good shape. But of course, because the Sherwood Park Master Plan calls for the construction of four new tennis courts, we want to be responsible with city funds and not invest a great deal in completely renovating those courts, only to dismantle them, because there are going to be playing fields there, and then we will have the new tennis courts at Sherwood. So they will be closed once they get to a point of just being completely unsafe. We do hope to be far enough down the line on the Sherwood Park Master Plan to start construction of new tennis courts sooner than later, but honestly, there's no timeline for that yet.
But the plan is, assuming that those courts that exist right now remain safe, albeit marginally, that they're going to be in place until the new courts are built? And then are they going to be removed for play fields? Is that the plan?
Yes. In Phase Two, they will be removed. That's correct.
And then a question from me, it was brought up a couple of times, the dog park. Is this still being planned for different facilities, and what's the conversation with the dog park people?
So that comment is absolutely correct, that the area that now houses the dog park, if you will, was originally intended as a major area of tennis courts. And the agreement was made years ago to allow the Parks for Pups people to have a temporary dog park, but I think we all did that with sort of a wink and a nod, because once somebody has some property, and honestly, they are doing a remarkable job with that dog park. It's very well maintained, it's very well utilized, and it has been an amazing amenity for our community. But, you know, the downside to that was it did replace another sport in the future. And so that's why it is pretty important to really think hard before we would do that again. The good news is we will have four new tennis courts in the area that was mentioned near Senior Sanchez, right on Cedar Wood, once that plan is complete.
Very good. Councilwoman Strong. And will those be lighted?
Yes.
Okay. That was the thing, because they want, they want lights on the tennis courts too. Mr. Havitt.
Yeah, Julie, I heard that, I thought I heard that you were going to shut down Sherwood Courts, because just you didn't think they were going to be safe or something.
Right.
So my question is, why can't, if they're going to be shut down, pickleball could use those in the interim?
Well, the reason that we would consider shutting them down is because the surfacing would be unsafe. So it would be unsafe for tennis and for pickleball.
Right. But what's making them unsafe?
There are severe cracks throughout the courts, and in fact, Frida, if you could come up and comment on the significant damage that we have there.
As you're aware, they're old asphalt courts. There's full-depth cracks in those courts. The earth continually moves. We fill the cracks, the cracks get wider and expand. There's no real, we resurfaced and repaired, what was it, five, six years ago? It's worse now. There's no real way to maintain them in a safe manner without reconstructing them.
But, okay. All right. Well, again, I'm trying to utilize, you know, city property as most as we can, and if pickleball courts are smaller than a regular tennis court, obviously, then it might be usable. I don't know. That's why I was just throwing it out. Instead of just letting it go fallow and not being used at all, that's what I was trying to get at.
Absolutely. No, I understand that, and honestly, we are very hopeful this next round of the state grant funding. I mean, if that should come through with $8 million, then we could take on the tennis courts sooner than we currently can.
Well, can also, I mean, with your estimate here, you know, to do the eight courts that we're talking about on Scott, there's no reason why we couldn't cut some money out and make that happen sooner, because it's a puzzle piece of the whole master plan. That piece could get done sooner than later, and that's my opinion here, too, that we should. I mean, we found $50,000, more than that, actually, to fix the four courts of tennis courts at Centennial. You know, maybe that we can find some other place, especially with the COVID money coming, might be able to cut far that out and even do a fundraiser to make them all happen or something. There'd be, you know, community support to do that, but that would be, I thought, my direction, to kind of make that go in sooner than later.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gregory.
Yeah, a couple of questions for you, Julie. So on the, if we were to go with option two, it's my understanding that if we go ahead and design the courts and we get the grant, we get refunded that money, we take it out of the general fund. Is that correct?
Correct. So at this time, as I indicated, we're waiting for results for the state grant, but the performance period has already begun. So if we now pay for the design of those pickleball courts and then the grant comes through, those, that cost would be reimbursable. Yes.
And is it true there's a huge pent-up demand because of COVID for pickleball?
For all recreational activities. Absolutely. Councilwoman Gregory, you are spot on.
So one of the things I'd like to recommend to the council is, and Frida's going to have to answer this question for us, I think it's really, it was already a resolution in 2019 to do this. I think we should do an expedited design for the pickleball, eight pickleball courts at Sherwood, and then put some kind of a date on that, date certain, and then in the next maybe two meetings from now, come back and figure out a way to fund those courts immediately, and just get it done for the community. We're the only, I think there's, we're the only city left in the county that has not built pickleball courts for the community. So, and it does a couple of things. It brings a lot of business to town, makes a lot of pickleballers happy, but it makes a lot of tennis players happy, but it's just something that's been in a need for a long time. And we were going down that track two years ago. So I think with our, with Ryan's ability, we figured out a way to just get the money and do it, but expedited. So timeframe-wise, what are we looking at for design and then construction? Frida?
Councilwoman Strong. And I totally agree. And I totally agree with that, as long as we immediately follow that with the design and construction of the tennis courts, so that we can then close the unsafe ones.
That's already happening.
Well, no, but I mean, I mean the ones at Sherwood.
They're redoing Centennial right now, they'll be like brand-new courts. So, could you answer that question?
I've already solicited a design estimate from the firm, which is reflected in Julie's staff report, that designed the master plan to start on the pickleball courts immediately. So I would, once we had a contract in place, I would say that that could start within a, in a month or so. Design will take some time, given the civil and structural and other elements, electrical engineering that will have to be done. So I would guess that design would take, and this is just an estimate, four to five months for design. You know, everyone's very busy right now, there are a lot of communities maximizing their construction right now on recreation facilities. I can certainly talk to SSA, we have a good relationship with them about what that expedited timeframe might be, but I wouldn't want to commit to anything quicker than that.
And then on that design criteria, I guess we, I'll just form this in a motion, but one of the things I'd like to see is the pickleball community being part of the, some input into the design of those courts, as far as regulations.
Of course, that will, it will go through our normal community outreach and also Parks and Advisory Committee review.
Do you ready for a motion? Sure. So, I'd like to make a motion, let's see, we'll call it sort of a hyper or hybrid of option two, an accelerated process for the design of the eight pickleball courts at Sherwood, and bring that back to the council as soon as it's feasible. And in maybe two, two meetings from now, we come up and figure out how to pay for the courts. So we put that in place the minute the design is done. That's my motion.
Second. Motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Hammond. There's no further discussion.
And Mr. Mayor, may I just interject one quick thing? It would also be helpful to just once and for all, put the issue of shadow lines to rest, so if that could somehow be incorporated, that
Separate motion?
We're not doing shadow lines or whatever.
Can I amend it? I'll amend the motion to eliminate the possibility of shadow lines at Centennial.
Thank you.
Yeah, second. Second's good, okay, maker and the motion, the second are good with that, so if there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye, motion passes, 5-0. Thank you very much, and thank you all for being part of the solution, appreciate it.
Find an Olympian, we need somebody for the Olympics for pickleball, for Passau.
Just start looking for Olympic sponsors right now.
We're going to have a horse person.
Okay, we'd have just a little bit more, we have a little more business to do, so.
So John.
Thank you. All right, council reports, what have they been up to? Councilman Garcia?
Oh goodness. I'm sorry, sir, I don't have my calendar with me. I, I didn't bring it.
You're so busy, you forgot your calendar.
Yeah, I'm so busy, I forgot my calendar. I know I've been working with Mr. Sloan on trying to work with the Hispanic Business Association to figure out a plan for business and economic plans for the organization. So I've been working with the HVA Board and with the Hispanic Business Community as what we're needing as far as classes or some kind of business conferences, or what is it that they're going to be needing in the near future. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Councilman Strong?
Well, actually, this last time since our last meeting, it's been pretty quiet on my meetings, except that tomorrow will be a SLCOG meeting, and there's a lot of things on that agenda that I'm supporting, because that's going to give us some more money for some of our projects, move some others forward. So we're looking, looking good, some grant opportunities for maybe an additional $750,000 for our, our bridge down there at Fine Street, and beginning to move on, on more other funding activities. And then following that, I'll be going into meetings at CalCOG, board meeting, and then we're all going to that League of Cities or CalCities meeting, whatever they call it, where probably some of these same issues are going to come up on funding, and hopefully we can get the, the governor, who has seemed to be more cooperative recently, getting us more funding on some of this stuff, too.
Very good, thank you. Councilman Hammond?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, not a whole lot happening on meetings, I did have a discussion with our new executive, interim executive director for IWMA, which is Pablo Ogren, maybe a lot of you remember, from the county. He's been brought in to sit in for IWMA, we're having a meeting next week, interested conversation with him, he kind of agrees with our position a little bit with regard to, you know, having a board like that direct another city against their will, so to speak. So anyway, that's, again, I told him our intent, that we're listening and waiting for the county's report on possibly doing SB 1383 on their own, which is kind of what we're considering with staff, just trying to get information about that so we can make a decision. Again, I think there's value in IWMA as far as staying on board, if we can have an understanding that, you know, we will only regulate what is mandated by the state, and that's, that's a big one for me, anyway, and I hope it is for you, too. But at any rate, that is moving forward, I'll report out maybe next meeting what's going to be going on with that and the future of IWMA. I did have some questions, though, and I just saw Frida leave. Is Julie here still? Julie, do you know anything about the Sherwood, or excuse me, the Barney Schwartz billboards, the, the scoreboards being replaced, and you know the status of that currently?
Yes, Frida is working on that. She, at the July Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee meeting, she did bring samples in, we had some of the players that had been providing you with input attend that meeting, and they were very satisfied with what Frida's proposing, so she's moving forward with that.
Okay, so that is on plan to move forward, get it done, get it completed. I just started thinking, we have other ballparks, like over here by the post office, for instance, I looked at that one, that's probably just as bad. I mean, have we thought about looking at the different ballparks that we have that?
I think one of the main differences is that Barney Schwartz Park has the benefit of that wonderful endowment fund, and so when we start talking about some of our other ballfields, we'll have to consider how we fund that. We can certainly add that to a list, I know budget development's coming up probably sooner than we'd like, because we're just in a one-year budget right now. We could take a look at those scoreboards at other fields and determine that. I know with the Sherwood Park Master Plan, of course, there will be brand-new everything when it comes to ballfields in the interim, do we want to invest a lot in that? We'll have to make those kinds of judgments.
Well, and that was, again, what bothered me about this whole thing with Barney Schwartz, I don't attend that, I don't play ball anymore, and so when I hear that, you know, these kind of items that the city owns, you know, for the public, are not being maintained, and they've been broken for quite a while, bothers me that, you know, why did we not get this into a budget already to repair what, again, the city owns? In other words, to keep it at a certain level of maintenance. And that's what troubles me, I think, a little bit, that somebody should have been on the lookout here, maybe got it on visual. We're always looking for money, but I mean, if we don't plan for something, it's never going to get done either. So same way, that's why I mentioned, you know, over here, the other ballpark I just drove by the other day, that looked pretty bad, too, but I don't even know if it works, but see.
No, I appreciate that, that's a helpful point of view. I will say, again, the benefit of the endowment fund certainly is obvious, we've got funds to make these improvements. The downside, if there is one, is that we don't completely control that endowment, so Frida and her staff do make evaluations about maintenance concerns, and they bring those before the REC Foundation. The REC Foundation then helps prioritize. It really does take then some concerns from the community to say, we think perhaps you should reprioritize some of these issues. And when they did that, REC Foundation was very open to that, Parks and Rec Advisory then helped us select the right equipment, if you will, so it did happen. But your point is well-taken, we want to be more proactive about that.
So if I could inject, John, I, not too long ago, a couple of weeks ago, I took a tour with Julie and Frida on all the recreation facilities in the city, because I had not visited them for a long time, and noticed some of the same things that you're talking about right now, and said that I really hope that we would take a longer range, more comprehensive view at developing and maintaining our facilities. And maybe in response to your comment tonight, we could have a more in-depth report on that at some time in the future.
Absolutely, and I also want to take this opportunity to thank council again for approving the funding to hire a consultant who is now helping us with a five-year strategic plan for recreation, which also has a facilities component to it. So that, again, will help us to kind of take that longer look that you're recommending, and hopefully you'll see some improvement, so thank you for that.
Okay. And then that's all I have for you, Julie, thank you. And so, the next thing I was going to move on to is community development. Warren, I think, again, I've been pressured, and I'm sure all of us have, with regard to getting the Beechwood Master Plan, or specific plan, it's been approved, but then again, we have a lot of things happening before we can actually do things out there with regard to building. Can you give us an update on what is currently going on with Beechwood?
Yeah, definitely. So we actually had a good meeting today with two of the major property owners, Tom Erskine and Ray and Mike Harrod. So you'll recall, that specific plan was approved last fall with the EIR, so they are moving on to the next phase, which is the small lot tentative maps. It's our understanding from the meeting today that they have a national merchant builder that's interested in purchasing about half of the property. So there's definitely interest in getting the small lot tentative map approved by the planning commission as soon as possible. So we agreed that we're going to start a regular meeting schedule with them, so that we can make sure that that tentative map gets approved. Mr. Erskine also has a tentative map that he's planning on submitting very soon, be under the same process. So I think with a specific plan, we can move the tentative maps through the planning commission process fairly quickly. So it seemed like we're all on the same page about how to move this ahead, obviously housing's a priority, so I think this is something that we can definitely work together as a team. We basically use that process to get the specific plan through the process, and now we need to do the same process on the map.
I know there was an offer from them to, if needed, that your department, they would be happy to pay for an additional planner to help, you know, with your workload, and I think that's on the table, obviously, and I think you mentioned that, you know, when it gets a little further down the road, that might be a possibility to.
Yeah, we, we actually have a kind of a pretty good bench of consultants, both on the engineering and planning side, so I think as we kind of meet regularly, if we identify that there's some sort of critical path that needs some additional assistance, we've used SWCA for a lot of that, they're under contract to work on Beechwood anyway, so I, I think we can bring some additional resources as needed. I think first, we got to really sort out what it is, kind of the, the hang-ups are, and then focus on those, and if we need to bring in consultants, we can do that.
Okay, and then also the Olson, Sal Chandler, how is that coming along?
So you'll recall, you authorized the, the formation of the Community Facilities District, that's the key in terms of moving to final maps and construction. So we got a number of meetings, and we briefed the council on that process, so in September, we'll start the formation of the Facilities District that'll fund the infrastructure. It's our understanding, there's two national merchant builders that have, basically are in escrow to purchase about half of the site, they will take the lead on construction. The mask grading permit for everything from basically Fontana Road to Turtle Creek is ready to issue once they pay the fees. So it looks like things should come together where early fall, like September-ish, we could see groundbreaking moving ahead. I think the merchant builders want to see progress on the CFDs before they, you know, take the jump of moving into the grading construction phase, but grading's ready to go. We do expect, once Olson starts moving, which is this fall, you're going to see tremendous amount of progress out there. Those national merchant builders, once they start, they, they move very quickly, they're talking about building hundreds of units per year, so it looks quite like nothing's happening, you know, it's, it's very, very close.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing I had, Mr. Mayor, is regarding the marijuana grows that are starting to come around our city, as far as influence, our sphere of influence, and this is something, again, I think that maybe council should weigh in on with regard to a policy or a thought here, that, you know, we want to protect our, our city as much as possible from those kind of installations. So is there anything that you need from us as far as direction on, you know, what we might want to give you in, in these kind of situations? It's all in the county, but then again, it's in our sphere of influence, in my opinion, we should say something about it, so.
I think that's kind of more a policy issue, so I'm going to defer to the city manager, city attorney, maybe, for some feedback on that.
Well, I believe what's happening now is, when there is a discretionary permit that's proposed for property that's nearby the city, we're, we're made aware, and, and staff is given an opportunity to comment, or to submit comments on, on what we think should be evaluated as part of that permitting process. What staff doesn't typically do is, is recommend approval or denial, rather, we're recommending what should be evaluated as part of the county's evaluation. One thing that I don't think we have from councils, any direction on, you know, how, how far geographically do you want us to go from the city limits on commenting on these things? Or do you want to establish some sort of new approach, where we're, once we're notified, we're bringing these items before the planning commissioner, before the council to get, get direction?
I, yeah, I, I think, again, it's something that's kind of slipping underneath the radar.
Probably want to put this on an agenda, right?
Yeah.
If I may, so that we don't stray too far.
Thank you.
I think what we should do is, because, and I, I know that a couple of us want to weigh in on this tonight, the, the whole cannabis conversation has been delayed because of the pandemic, so I think all issues from cannabis operations within the sphere of influence around the city, to cannabis operations in the foreign industrial components within the city, need to come before the council so we can discuss those and come up with the policies necessary to guide staff when it comes to responding to the county, and also to give other people in the community who've expressed an interest in this industry some idea of the direction we're going. So I think that's something that should be agendized.
That's what I was trying to.
A caution, and that is, when we're talking about sphere of influence, make sure what you're defining, because Lafco has pulled our sphere of influence way in, it's not anything like, like we used to have.
Fully anticipate that would be a part of the discussion, to define that. So anything else, John? No, other than just direction to staff, try to get something coming back to it.
Do you want to do that on the cannabis right now? Do we have enough members to bring it back?
So, okay, does the council, is the council in agreement, we should bring that back for policies on cannabis?
Yeah.
Especially, especially the retail.
Yes, especially retail.
For Dobbs Garden, okay.
Okay, okay, good.
Thank you.
Mr. Gregory?
So I had a meeting with Supervisor Bishong, discussing many of the issues, including cannabis on our borders, and I also had a meeting with the new executive director for Lafco, which I am a commissioner on, and we're starting to get, things are heating up, so I'm going to get a little more active in that. And then just for a bit of history, 41 years ago, I was a tennis instructor at Sherwood Park for the city of Basseroles, working for the rec department as a contractor, just for your information. So I was very impartial tonight, making sure it was fair. So with that, it's kind of been a quiet time, I've been out of town, but glad to be here and things run well, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Strong had one other.
Yeah, I had one thing I forgot, I don't know how I forgot it, because it was a meeting this afternoon, and that was a, a real quick meeting I had with the, with Losan, the train, the Pacific Surf liner, because of all of the fires and earthquakes and sea level rise, et cetera, one of the bridges just south of us is so damaged, they can't run trains on it. So for two weeks, we will have no service by train southward. Just so everybody knows, I believe that two-week period starts next Sunday or Monday, so for two weeks, there will be no train service to the south, just so you know, and then they expect to have that bridge replaced by then.
Okay, very good.
That was just an announcement, so the public can be aware.
A couple of things from my calendar from the last couple of weeks, I was invited to speak at Sunrise Roadie, it was a very interesting presentation, a good conversation, that group meets up at the Culinary Alliance Building, and they're very interested in traffic circulation plans there, particularly the roundabout that's being planned, very positive meeting, good group of people, and a lot of good questions. I attended the past Rabels Chamber of Commerce Policy Committee meeting, I am the city's representative to the Homeless Services Oversight Committee, that's HSOC, which was referenced earlier this evening. which was referenced earlier this evening. I attended that board meeting. chaired the Channel Counties Division Board of Directors meeting. And just so the council is aware, I'm sure you are aware right now, that COVID-19 is surging in the Sacramento area. So CalCities is kind of going do we or don't we when it comes to the convention? I'm thinking that, just personally, I'm thinking they're going to go ahead with it, but it's probably going to be kind of a hybrid situation. And some of the Channel Counties Division activities that we've been working on for our 25 cities might be modified also. So things that are happening in Sacramento are definitely going to be affecting us. Welcome to the Chamber of Commerce and a group of other people from the community into the council chambers here recently. The chamber asked to talk about the issue of homelessness and its impact on the community and the frustrations of the, of the community about that. They volunteered to be basically our point organization to provide education services and also to solicit input from people in the community for ideas that perhaps we have not come up with to address homeless services and also how to mitigate some of the negative impacts of homelessness in the community. They're putting together a plan, which they have recommended for a one-year duration. My idea is, and we'll hear more about this later, is this is going to be a multi-year effort to make sure the community is fully involved in the solution of this problem. Attended the San Luis Obispo County Wine Maker Awards at the county fairs, gave away some proclamations, everybody was happy about that. Also attended the San Luis Obispo Advisory Committee meeting, which is our North County Advisory Committee for the REACH organization, which again, was referenced earlier this evening. Talked a lot about spaceport, talked a lot about broadband opportunities, and how we're going to use that organization to sort of align our purposes and go after some of the state funding that's now going to be coming down. Lot of money coming from the state in broadband, not a whole lot of ways that have been devised how to get your hands on it yet. So this organization is trying to put together a comprehensive plan and a comprehensive document that we can use to leverage those funds and get them into our community. Spoke for the Paso Robles Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors on timely topics. Attended the jobs meeting with union representatives at the county fairgrounds as they talk about the resurgence of business after the pandemic and the things they're looking forward to to encourage, the education of the labor force, carpenters, pipe fitters, electrical workers, et cetera. And so we'll be having more conversations about that in the future. I've been in contact with the other mayors of the county because we, we are currently in this county 10% behind the state average for COVID vaccinations, and because our numbers are starting to rise again in San Luis Obispo County, not as significantly as Sacramento, but they are rising, and we don't want to go back to that bad place where people start closing down again. Several of the mayors will be getting together to record COVID-19 PSAs to encourage vaccination in our, in our various cities, and I'll be working on that. And then today, I was on sound off on KPRL. I had one caller from a gentleman who was very frustrated by the homeless situation. And so I think that's, it's timely that our friends at the chamber have offered to step forward and help us with that. Coming up next, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee will be Thursday on the 9th, 4:00 p.m. Senior Citizen Advisory Commission meeting, August the 9th at 1:30 p.m. Planning Commission meeting, Tuesday, August the 10th at 6:30 p.m. Downtown Parking Advisory Commission meeting, Wednesday, August 11th, 9 a.m. The Library Board meeting, Thursday, August the 12th at 9 a.m. North County, North San Luis Obispo County CERT training will be Saturday, August the 14th, from 8 a.m. to 5 p.m. We are having a special meeting tomorrow night, and that time is 5. 5 o'clock tomorrow night here in the council chambers. And then our next regular city council meeting will be Tuesday, August the 17th at 6:30 p.m. Deadline for submitting items for the regular meeting on the 17th is Wednesday, August the 4th. So hurry those notes in, that's tomorrow. If there's no further business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gregory. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, or adjourned. Thank you for your hard work.